The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's not, is it just not picking up or not recording at all? As long as it's recording, that's the requirement.
I'm sure it's not. I'm sure it's not.
How sure are you that it's recording?
How sure are you?
How much are you sure?
Last thing I can say is, I'm sure it's recording.
Recording.
How sure are you that it's recording?
Well, my spoken part is, I'm surprised.
And if it's recording, why is it recording?
If it's recording, why is it recording?
Yeah.
How sure are you that it's recording?
Well, my spoken part is.
Will, do you have any experience with this?
No. You want me to try?
I mean, you want to be all that I can do for it, but.
Okay, good.
What are you checking something?
That's it. That's it. That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
Way to go, Bill.
All right, Desiree, you go.
Mr. Iglesias?
Here.
Mr. Gattano?
Here.
Mr. Leo?
Here.
Mr. Garofolo?
Here.
Mr. Ketchum?
Here.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes, here.
And Mr. Iglesias?
Here.
And I'm here, too.
Oh, Chairman, great, no, sorry.
Okay, in the absence of David Cesare, we'll sit our first applicant in the, um, minutes of the previous meeting, the motion to approve.
I make the motion to approve.
Motion. Motion by, uh, Mr. Iglesias, second by, uh, Mr. Garofolo. All in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed, then any objections? No objections. Okay. We have three applications on our agenda. We cut the, the meeting ends at 11:00, not just because of us, but because the alarm goes off at 11:00. We'll do the best we can to hear every application. We don't know that everyone's going to be heard tonight. But first on the agenda is CD 21-08, the name of J.C. Company LLC. I like it. All the papers in order.
Yes, they are.
Public notice was properly. So we're going to, here's the procedure to be here. You give your presentation, we're going to hear our engineer's report, we're going to open up to the public, and we're going to vote. The last question goes along the way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Michael Malinsky of Fox Rothschild LLC, on behalf of the applicant, J.C. Company. I had an opportunity to conference this with your solicitor and your engineer, and just so we're clear, tonight, we are here for only use variance approval. We're seeking use variance approval to allow residential use, manufacturing and assembly incidental to onsite retail, and outdoors, and outdoor storage on Lot 30 of Block 7101, also known as 870 Harding Highway. This is located in your Pines Highway Commercial District. This is back before you this evening. It was previously before you, back on November 3rd of 2021. Now, we're here on a remand hearing, which I'll let your solicitor explain to the board, and then it's my understanding that your engineer and solicitor would like to do completeness on the use variance, with the understanding that, again, we're only here tonight for use variance. Should this board grant use variance approval, this is a bifurcated application, we would renotice and have to go before the Pines with a site plan, comply with the stormwater management standards and Pines standards, get a certificate of filing, and then come back before this board for a site plan application and any variance associated with that site plan. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to your solicitor.
Yes, this is a remand by order of the court, as your call, most of you heard, the prior application. So the court ordered a remand and a new hearing, so just understand, this is a new hearing, it's a new application. We're not considering evidence from the past, past hearing. So even though it's a remand from the court, it's a brand-new application, a brand-new hearing. It is bifurcated, which means, instead of you hearing the use variance, instead of you hearing the use variance, more important, that you guys understand that they, instead of hearing the use variance along with the site plan, you're hearing just the use variance tonight, and that does not mean that you can't consider the site. You are allowed to consider issues regarding the site, about the site, to help you with your decision on the, on the use variance. So you're not precluded from discussing the features of the site. You're going to have to consider whether the applicant carries their burden of proof, positive, negative criteria. We'll go over that again, but it's been discussed numerous times, and we're aware of it. If you feel they have, then you grant the variance; if you feel they have not, you grant the variance. You can also grant a variance with conditions, if you think there's a use that is, that they have carried the burden of proof for, you could grant it, and you could grant it with conditions that you think make it more acceptable, more tolerable. So in this case, the site is developed, so you're faced with a little bit of a unique situation. You don't have a, a vacant lot with somebody coming in to say, "I'd like to do certain things." As you can tell from our engineer's review letter, there's a lot happening out there. So you're going to have to look at this site in some aspect as if it were vacant, and decide whether to pose use as a suitable use. At the same time, you're not going to be able to ignore what's happening, and you're going to have to hear what is going to continue to take place and what isn't, but that's going to be part of their presentation. If the use variance is granted, we do have another court order that says the next step for the applicant would be to go to the Pines for a certificate of filing. Once that's done, then it will then, then come back here for the site plan hearing with a new notice and a new application. Anything you want to add to that as far as the background?
No.
Okay.
Questions, gentlemen?
No.
Chairman and board members, we did a report dated August 31st, 2023, and I just want to touch on the completeness portion of it, understanding that the completeness portion, this portion is only for use variance, as we heard, the site plan is on a follow-up. So we, we reviewed the stuff that was submitted with the application for this 870 Harding Highway property in the Pines Highway Commercial Zone. We reviewed it against your checklist for zoning board applications, and we find that all items, all 10 items as part of that checklist have in fact been addressed, and we, we recommend the board deem it complete for review and have the application proceed this evening.
Now, under, under our ordinance, the completeness is actually given by an administrative official, at this point, Desiree, so she actually did send an email confirming that it was complete, but certainly, for you gentlemen, to confirm it tonight is helpful as well. So we just want to take a vote on completeness.
As we make the motion to, uh, keep this application complete, I want to make a little motion by, uh, Mr. Garofolo, who's second, Mr. Iglesias, is that, uh, roll call?
No, you can do it, boys.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed, any objections? Okay, motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have five witnesses with me this evening. I understand that you'd like to swear them all at once, and all at once. Those witnesses are Mr. Jerry Truster, Mr. John Dalrymple, Quormack Morrissey, Joseph Kwiatkowski, and Tiffany A. Morrissey, so.
Will they come forward?
You all.
What's your name and address directly?
John Dalrymple, 214 East Collin Drive, Williams Town, New Jersey.
Jared Truster, 45 Salmo Road, Monroeville.
Joseph Kwiatkowski, 11 Gateshead Drive, Homertown, New Jersey.
Quormack Morrissey, 7 Equestria Drive, Smithville, New Jersey.
Tiffany Morrissey, 7 Equestria Drive, Smithville, New Jersey.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is there a particular place we'd like to easily be set up?
Where we can see it.
Right here?
As long as you don't mind blocking the front of it there.
Wherever you want it, Mr. Chairman. You tell us. I need a pack so I can show it to John. I need a pack so I can show it to him. Exactly. What do you want, first area?
Is there one for the public?
Uh.
That you could face the other way so they could possibly follow?
No, there is not one for the public, Mr. Chairman.
Um.
I have, well, yeah.
The only thing is, my witness is going to point stuff out so you can testify as regards to the specific operations at the site that was part of your engineer's report. So my first witness is Mr. Dalrymple, so I, that's okay. That's fine.
Your packet does sound like a believe a photo.
It does.
It's not as.
It was submitted to the board.
Not as clear, not as in color, but.
All right. I'll stand over here and point stuff out as I have to testify. My first witness is Mr. John Dalrymple of Iglesias Company LLC.
Good evening.
So, Mr. Dalrymple, let's talk about what goes on at this site. Let's talk about first, you do the retail sale of pools from this site, is that correct?
Yes.
And does that occur out of the office located?
To the right.
First building in the front of the property?
Yes, to the right side of the building.
And you indicate it to the right? That's correct. And that is because there's also an attached garage to that office, is that correct?
Yes.
And that garage has three bays, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Focusing just on the office, because we're going to get into the, what occurs in this garage space later on, but focusing just first on the office, what are your hours of operation at the office?
Nine to six.
Okay. And what days are you open, the office?
Typically, six days a week, Sundays by appointment.
Okay. And how many customers would you say you get in a given day that come to inquire about a pool, a purchase of pool at this site?
Two to 12.
Okay. And how many employees do you have that work in the office?
Two.
And how is trash handled in the office?
All the trash is accumulated in a six-yard dumpster in front of the, the assembly building in the back.
So you have trash cans in the office?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
Collected, collected, collected on the utility cart, taken back to the.
And you're talking about this six-yard dumpster right here?
Yes.
Okay. Now, in addition to the retail, you also have manufacturing and assembly of pools that goes on at this site, is that correct?
That's correct.
And does your manufacturing and assembly of the pools occur in this building in the back?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Can you please explain to the board the manufacturing process? How are these pools manufactured at this site?
Essentially, you have a mold, which, if you look at the picture, would be the red object.
I'm speaking into the microphone.
I'm sorry. Let's try to look. You have a red object there that is a mold out in the front. We pull them into the building. By hand, we wax the mold to prepare it for application. After we wax the mold, it sits for a few hours, then we spray our gel coat onto the mold, let it sit for an hour. Once it becomes tacky, then at that point, we hand lay our fiberglass onto the mold, rolling it out in a hand process with fiberglass rollers and also paint rollers, and at that point, once the product is laid over top of the mold, it will sit for about two to three hours to cure, and then, once it's cured, usually the next day, it'll be brought out and popped off with a large forklift, which is called a lull, or a crane.
And the pools that are current in this area are the ones that, the bottom of the pools are yellow in color and the inside of the pools are blue, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And how many pools can you manufacture that?
Usually one, one large one, or a couple small ones in a couple days, just depends on the size and the orientation of the product.
Now, manufacturing, that occurs Monday through Saturday, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And what are the hours that you're doing manufacturing in this building and assembly?
Uh, 6:30 to 6:00.
Okay. And how many employees do you have working in the manufacturing and assembly portion of this property in that building?
On the actual production, 13.
Now, you also have an office trailer in the back, which you utilize as a break room for your employees, is that correct?
Yes.
Good. And waste, how do you handle waste generated in the, first of all, what waste is generated in the manufacturing process?
As far as fire, like as far as manufacturing of my product?
Yes.
There is very little waste. The only waste that we actually generate is when we clean our gun, so we will end up with about a quart of resin or pigment that is cleaned out of the gun, and then we put it into a 55-gallon drum, which is monitored by the DEP.
Is there, is there dust, fire-related dust?
There is not.
And that is, let me ask you, getting into the fiberglass, I'm happy you brought that up, Mr. Chairman, you're not cutting or grinding fiberglass at this site, correct?
When we do put hole penetrations into the product, there is a little bit that's collected as a solid, and it is disposed of, you know, DEP regulations, as we collect it and put it into the, the six-yard trash container.
But other than putting those holes in, you're not cutting the fiberglass pool?
No, there, there's zero waste.
Grinding the fiberglass, you're just hand-rolling the.
Everything.
Resin or the.
Right.
Gel coat over the fiberglass woolen fabric, right?
Everything goes out as a solid. In fact, when we do have some tooling gel, which is, becomes a dust material, when we are working the product, we actually make that into what they call a talc, which is a putty, which is a body filler, so everything is reused within our process, so there is no, there's nothing that leaves the site that's not a solid.
Now, how often does that 55-gallon drum that you store the product from the spray gun get disposed of?
Since conception, we're still on our 50, first 55-gallon drum, again, monitored by waste from DEP, and we probably have about five to six gallons left of product that could still go into that drum prior to disposal, and then we have Safe Clean out of Columbus, New Jersey, which is a company that does all the body shops, mechanic shops, fiberglass shops, collect and dispose of it, and gives the state of New Jersey their reports that we properly dispose everything.
Now, let's go into the three-bay garage that's attached to the office. Before we get, you also install your pools, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the vehicles that we see here, the water tanker truck, the service vehicles, the trailers, the cranes, and the other trucks on the site are all utilized in your installation process, is that correct?
Everything is performed in-house, everything from the tanker of water. We have 11 excavators of all different sizes and shapes to adapt to the properties. We have different trailer configurations, trucks that we have to haul our product. We have various yards in different states that we supply our product, and that's why the truck and trailer combination will change, adapting to the product that we are shipping at the time that we are sending our loads out.
And you also have materials that you utilize in the installation, such as styrofoam, which, correctly from Rome, we utilize in packing and transporting the pools, is that correct?
Yes, so if you take like solo cups, how they stack inside or one another, our combinations of truck and trailer, we can haul four or five pools in stack, so we need the styrofoam to be able to stack in between the products so it doesn't scratch.
And you also have pavement, bricks, and stone on pallets in the back that utilize for hardscaping, concrete, and other work around the, when you install the pools, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And you also have wood back there, what is the wood utilized for?
The wood is used for several things, one being in our transportation, where we have to stack the pool, sometimes we need to put beams and girders across. Second, if we're building a plug to make a mold, to make a pool, we need to use the wood to structurally build something. And thirdly, we also use a lot of wood, I'm sorry, we use some of our wood for structural laminates in some of our components in the manufacturing side.
All right, now let's get into the garage portion that's attached to the office, okay? That has three bays, correct?
Yes.
And two of the bays you utilize for taking care of or keeping up with your molds, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you please explain what you use those two bays for as it relates to the pool mold?
A mold is, is considered your finished product, so if there's any ding scratches or any imperfections, that's where we do most of our buffing and working of the mold and in preparation for production.
And you have another bay, what do you utilize that other bay for?
The other bay is storage of tools and our construction equipment, our trucks and trailers. We do all of our own mechanical work in-house so that we have less downtime.
And you have two employees that are associated with this garage portion, is that correct?
On the mechanical side, yes.
Okay, and that's a mechanic and a welder?
Mechanic and a welder.
Okay. Now, let's go through, I know we went through the equipment that's stored here, the materials and the pools, but let's go through some of the other items, because it was mentioned in the engineer's report about containers and sheds that are on the site, so let's go through for the board and point out what's being stored where. In this shed that is to the right of the property where the pools are displayed, you currently store, what do you store in there?
Mostly, uh, PEP protective equipment for, for employees, all their suits, eyeglasses, respirators, duct tape, masking tape, everything they need for their, for their, for their gear.
And this building right here, that contains a compressor from both buildings, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, in these two large containers next to the manufacturing and assembly building, you store resin in those two containers?
Correct.
Okay. How is the resin stored?
In 55-gallon drums sealed into containers.
And then, in this building right here, smaller building next to the manufacturing assembly, you store fiberglass?
Yes, in the rolled form.
Okay. And then, what is in this roll-off container right there?
That's recycled drums and metal generated from the site.
Okay. And then also, you have another storage container that is right behind the manufacturing assembly building, and it's my understanding that contains pumps, filters, lights, and plumbing equipment for the installation of pools?
That is correct.
And this shed that is where the trucks that's to be relocated on the site as set forth in the variance plan, that contains a, my understanding, a golf cart, an ATV?
We have a couple ATVs that the employees use on-site to move generators and pumps around, around the facility.
And in addition to the office with the attached garage, the manufacturing assembly, there's also a single-family residence on this site, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that's in the front right here?
Yes.
Okay. And with regard to the single-family residence, is it your intent to occupy that single-family residence?
Yes.
And you're not proposing any changes to the residential dwelling, correct?
No.
I have no further questions from Mr. Dalrymple at this time.
What is the stack?
The stack is required as part of the air quality permit, it's, and I'm going to have, I have my air quality expert that's going to go into detail with the, what the stack does, as well as blower and the entire assembly, so if you want, I have.
Okay. When did you start this business? When are you?
I've been doing fiberglass pools for 30 years.
I think he was talking about at this.
You on this property?
Been on-site for five and a half years.
Did you get a permit to be there?
Did I get a permit to be there?
Were you approved?
I, I got the CO, and I've got.
I'll address the, if you want, I'll address the permitting issue real quick.
Sure.
Back on May 16th of 2020, J.C. Company did apply for a zoning permit to construct a 1,000.
He said he was been there for five years.
He hasn't, well, you haven't been there five years.
Four years. No, he asked how long we start the business there?
Five years.
Oh, we didn't.
If he's asking about manufacturing, then it's a different answer. He asked, when do we start the business there?
I think, okay.
Are you asking about this operation pool and?
I'm asking for the fiberglass operation.
Okay, so that's what he's looking for, the fiberglass operation.
I'm sorry.
Focusing on the fiberglass operation, okay?
The.
You shouldn't be allowed to, I mean, I remember as a right to ask.
Sure.
Fine, I'll, I'll just, the, come here. To address that question. On May 16th, 2020, you applied for a zoning permit to construct a 1,680-square-foot pole barn for commercial and industrial use, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, on, uh, July, on June 15th, 2020, you were issued a.
Fine, I'll address. The, come here. To address that question.
On May 16th, 2020, you applied for a zoning permit to construct a 1,680 square foot pole barn for commercial and industrial use, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. On July, on June 15th of 2020, you were issued a permit to construct two pole barns that totaled 4,200 square feet, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thereafter, you applied for a construction permit to the construction office, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you actually submitted at the request of the construction office, architectural plans, is that correct?
Yes.
And then they actually came back to you and said, we need you to revise these plans and you submitted revised plans to the construction office, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And this structure itself, okay, was actually constructed on the property in August of 2020, correct? About middle to end of August, 2020, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so since about, when you commenced the fiberglass or the manufacturing assembly operations, which is really the pool, when you commenced them at the site, was it after August of 2020?
Yes.
Remember when you commenced your manufacturing assembly operation at the site?
A few months after because we didn't have all of our equipment.
And you got your, just to go forward, in August, sometime in August of 2020 goes, the building goes up. But, and in October 22nd of 2020, you're issued your air pollution control permit and certificate to operate issued by the NJDEP, correct?
I believe the air permit came first.
Would you like me to show you the air permit?
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you say air?
I'm presenting you the air quality permit that was submitted as part of your application.
I misunderstood.
What was the approval date of your air quality permit?
10/22/20.
Okay. And is that the date it was issued to you?
Yes.
Okay. So it's sometime after October 22nd of 2020 is when you would have commenced any operation at this site, correct?
Yes.
Is that from the air and environmental quality requirement?
It's from the state, the DEP.
Yes.
There's two parts of air pollution permit.
What's that subject level penalty?
No, there is actually a permit, your administrative and notice of civil administrative penalty, which we can discuss as well. After this was the November hearing that the applicant was to, at that time, we filed a complaint and a prerogative writ and I was in discussions with your solicitor at that time and we decided not to put the stack up at that time, thinking that this may be able to be resolved. In fact, I met with your prior solicitor at this municipal building in February of 2021, or I think it was, I'll tell you right now, it was actually February 25th of 2022, I'm sorry. To discuss possible resolution of this matter at that time, we decided to hold off on any work at this site. It was actually in a proposed settlement agreement in April and when we couldn't come to a resolution, we had no choice and that's when the stack was installed. But that's the administrative order, notice of civil administrator penalty was issued in between that time when we were holding off trying to resolve this and I indicated that we would not do any work at the site regarding the stack. If we were able to resolve it and it was included in that original settlement agreement proposed.
Since that's been resolved, huh?
Yes, it's been resolved and the settlement is actually in there, the paperwork that was submitted.
So?
Yes.
Just want to clarify, you're saying you met with the solicitor regarding the stack?
Not the board solicitor.
Not with me?
Not with Mike Burelli.
Okay. The board members, I'll add a couple questions, guys. Will you figure it out now? Following Mr. Glaze is, he basically said you don't have permits for what you did and your attorney explained you did have some permits, some permits. Are you saying that the township gave you permission to do everything that we see out there now?
Yes.
All the pools, all the equipment, the additional building, they were all, were given, you do everything you're doing?
Again, there was. You also have had a lot of turnover where we had direction from various different people. So we can go right down the line. But the last one, what was her name? Rosemary. Rosemary gave us about 65% of our director.
And let me ask you a few other quick follow-up to that. You actually had a meeting in this building with certain individuals in, it was October 16th of 2020, is that correct?
Yes.
And who was present at that meeting?
I sat right there. I had the acting zoning officer, the officer, Decezary.
Okay.
John, the, I don't know his last name, the administrator. And then we had Sissy, no, not Sissy, I'm sorry, Lynn from zoning and the gentleman from building. Sorry.
Was Rich Sanders there?
Rich Saunders.
Okay. And actually at that meeting, you were provided with Mr. Saunders' cell phone number, is that correct?
Yes.
Why were you provided with Mr. Saunders' cell phone number?
To do various inspections.
Okay. And the discussion at that meeting was that the township needed to figure out how to address certain zoning issues related to this, but they didn't want to hold you up and they wanted you to still get inspection. So they provided you with Mr. Saunders' cell phone number, is that correct?
Yes. What John, the administrator told me that he had signed off on three applications, mine being the most sizable and that it was out of his capacity and realm and that they were going to make things right. And they gave me a cell, the inspector's cell phone number to then have our inspections because they had to figure out internally how to process the application. Because my application, when it was put in, said industrial and commercial at the bottom. They approved it internally without telling anybody, agricultural. There was never any intentions of me doing anything agricultural. I'm on Route 40. You can see everything.
And actually, subsequent to that meeting and in accordance with what you were saying about getting Mr. Saunders' cell phone number, he actually did come out and do an inspection in January 2021, correct?
Couple times, yes.
Okay. And specifically at that January 15th, 2021 inspection, did he indicate anything specific to you?
He says, it's a pole barn. It's not rocket science. You had a reputable company, don't do the work. I know them. Once they have everything processed on their end, he'll sign off on his end.
Once who has everything processed on their end?
The town internally with the application of the zoning. I don't, you know, I don't know how it works internally, but that's what he said.
And actually included in your package, which was submitted, was the emails regarding setting up this meeting that I referenced in October of 2000.
I really think we should focus on this use because.
I agree.
You know, whether you have the permit or not, we can't, we can't tell them why anybody, you have to read about it. Let's get back to the use.
Exactly. I'd like to focus just on the use, not on the history. That's a separate aspect of the complaint that was filed. We're not here tonight for that. But actually, I do have a few more questions that I'd like John to address that were in your engineer's report. They were related to deliveries. And I'd like to address deliveries at the site, just so we're clear on that. So, John, you get deliveries at the site about three to four times a week?
That's correct.
Okay. And what time do those deliveries usually occur?
Usually between 10 to 2.
Okay. What do the deliveries consist of? What do you get in these deliveries?
Most of the time, it's, half the time, it's a freight company bringing in our drums on pallets, on skids and a short tractor trailer.
Okay. And the drums are, what, drums are resin?
Yes.
Okay. You also get pumps and filters delivered to the site?
Yes, in a straight, straight truck, box truck.
And you have, you know, shorter trailers and box trucks that do these deliveries at the site?
Yes.
You don't have a WB67 trailer that comes to the site, correct?
Not internally, no.
I'm sorry.
Five to operation, working, jumping out and starting up that crane, pulling out.
Seven.
Seven, five. You're going out, taking, starting up earlier or anything like that.
Okay. If a crew's leaving, I'm sorry, install crew?
Yeah.
They could, they possibly can leave earlier, yes. Or sometimes the night before.
And real quick, with regard to the manufacturing assembly operation, you were inspected for compliance with the Clean Air Act back on September 23rd, 2022, is that correct?
Yes.
And no violations were identified, is that correct?
Correct.
And then also you were inspected for compliance with the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act on May 8th, 2023, is that correct?
Yes.
And no violations were identified, correct?
Correct.
And the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act deals with your disposal of the solid waste material you were talking about regarding the material that comes off of your spray gun, correct?
Yes.
Or when you clean your spray gun.
Every week we fill out a log.
And actually, should the board deem this application or this grant issue variance approval tonight as part of your site plan, not only relocating the shed, but all of the trucks except for the water tank here will be moved to the storage area that we show on the rear, is that correct?
Yes.
Now I have no further questions for Mr. Dalrymple.
I think I addressed everything in your engineer's report on that.
I have some questions that do relate to the, to the use. So you're requesting limited manufacturing and assembly, it's a, it means the retail is just your primary use. Are you saying that the retail is the primary use? So most of, most of what you do on there is talk to people about selling the pools?
Mm-hmm.
The rest of, the rest of the site is for manufacturing. You have one small office for retail?
Yeah.
You can get lost in some of the objects.
So, the, again.
You don't need a large office to deal with the two to 12 customers that come by there to buy a pool, correct?
No, not at all.
And if they want to buy a pool from you, you either have it onsite that it was already manufactured or you will manufacture it for them at this site, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So the manufacturing that you do here is associated with this onsite retail, correct?
100%. You literally walk down and pick your pool out.
Isn't fair to say most of the site is used for the manufacturing and the assembly and the storage, not for the retail?
No.
Without the retail, okay, without the, this would not be unnecessary, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the only reason you have the manufacturing here is because of the retail operations, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the only reason that the manufacturing size of the building is much larger than the retail is because you need a larger building to actually manufacture a pool, is that correct?
Our molds are up to 55 feet long.
I just noticed that you said it was 13 employees, I think for the manufacturing and two employees for the retail.
So it seems like a lot more going on than manufacturing. Yeah. Let's, let's go. How many, how many people do you need to actually run an office and sell pools, John?
I mean, you can do as little as one person.
No, let's, so most you need two people to actually operate the office and be salesmen in a sense and run the office to sell the pools, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But what are the size of the pool frames that you're dealing with in this building?
From wall to wall.
Okay. So you need potentially.
Multiple hands to work on a handmade product.
You need 12 people in there to move the products, okay, and to handle the operations, to hand roll in and do the manufacturing operations, correct?
That's correct, yes.
All right. I'm just trying to understand, because the numbers sort of make it look like a lot more towards manufacturing. So I do want to clarify that, I understand, for you to understand that.
Can I give you one more example?
Sure.
Spray gun. One guy is spraying, three guys are holding a hose, just so that that hose does not touch the mold and it, and affect the wax. So it takes four people just to spray. Then you're going to have one or two people cleaning and making sure that there's nothing attracted to the mold while you're spraying. So there's six people while we're spraying, just to color.
So the number of pools you're manufacturing, are they all going to like individual homeowners like us or are you going to like wholesale?
95% go, were self-generated retail to the consumer.
Then how many deliveries of pools do you take out a day at this site?
It could be zero, it could be three in a day, or it could be three in a week. There is no, it depends on weather, it depends, there's so many varying factors on that. I couldn't give you an algorithm, but.
I think your attorney said you intend to occupy the home?
Yes.
Occupying it now or you intend to occupy it in future?
I'm transitioning right now.
Now, are you, you do also do septic installation for J.C. Company Ellison?
Occasionally.
Now, is that equipment that you use for the pools the same as you use for septic installation?
I mean, it's same equipment, yes.
Are you using your office there to do your paperwork?
I also have a home office. I also have the equipment set at another location. I mean, it's not.
So you're not requesting to run your septic installation business from here?
No.
And if you are, you would take it elsewhere?
I'm not advertising or anything.
John, at this site, the only thing you advertise is?
Pools.
Pools, is that correct?
That's correct.
You said you've done this for 30 years?
Yes.
Over your pools?
What's that?
Always been cooled?
Yes.
Where was your prior location?
I had a failed partnership in Hamilton.
If you're just observing, as you clarify, there's a lot of stuff going on there in the property. I mean, it looks like you're doing very well. It looks like you're doing maintenance on trucks, building, making these pools. I mean, if this use variance were granted, are you confident you have enough room to do all these things there with, with what after you do retention ponds and parking and buffers, I mean, is there going to be enough roof you to operate out there?
Absolutely.
We also understand that pines, there may be some adjustments to the site plan based on pines review and the new stormwater management regulations. And again, we'll have to comply with whatever pines requires when we seek a certificate of filing from them, should the board grant the use variance. And the site plan could very well change as a result of the pines looking at this and stormwater management measures and if there's any, you know, wetlands buffers that we have to comply with and stuff of that nature. So this site could change.
We have buffers as well, for agricultural buffers. I mean, that's surround the fire compartment. I mean, I assume you spoke to an engineer, correct?
Yes, we do have an engineer involved and again, we understand and we will take care or address any buffer requirements that are required to have at site plan.
Are the eight of this property?
This property is, I believe, there's nine point, I want to say 9.6. It's on the, right. It's either 9.6 or 9.8, let me check.
Okay. Is this the only business going on in this, I mean, the property?
Yes, the pool business, which again has.
The building, the.
The manufacturing assembly. It's got the office and then the garage for the mold repairs and also for the repairs of the trucks that we utilize in our business. And then it's got the single-family home and storage.
Another question regarding the pool, you got a pool part having oil, correct?
Yes.
You don't trim it at all?
We do trim it.
You do, yeah. That's kind of insane.
What's that?
You do create dust.
I said I create dust when we outfit the pool and do our penetrations. Outfitting the pool, I'm sorry, to me, is trimming it. I thought I was clear on that, I apologize. So when we penetrate the pool, put in the skimmer, drill in the holes, after we pop it off the mold. But all that, but all that's collected. But yes, sorry about that.
I'm glad you were fine.
Yes, I wasn't dodging.
Yes, I wasn't dodging.
How long does it take to manufacture a pool approximately?
Depends on the size, one to two days. Yes.
The building there and then just stored out back.
Yes. Yes, or upfront for, to be shown for retail if that model had left.
Right, so the blue up front, there are the easy pools?
So if you think of a solo cup, the blue is a right side up pool, yes.
And if they're upside down, the yellow mustard are the upside down pools. But they're completed pools as well.
They're completed as well.
Yes.
Yes.
And then the red are the molds.
And then also you'll see some mustard with the yellow on top of molds to protect the mold. That, I would like to talk technical.
We have our air quality expert that'll address-
Handle that with the air stack, yes.
He'll handle that with regard to any odors and stuff of that nature.
And are you not, are you only manufacturing once you receive an order from a customer? Or you started doing it all in respect, if you will?
Nine times out of 10, it's still odor.
It's still odor?
Yes.
So you will just-
Occasionally we will-
Crack out pools and the people just say, I'll take that one.
If, if we have a slow day for the guys who don't have an order for, then we will produce a popular color model that, you know, based on sales inventory, that history.
You understand that if this were granted, when you came back with site plan, I mean, the site may look a little bit different by the time you're done with site.
I, yes, listen, I, Rosemary has guided us 65% of this, so a lot of this was created by her. So does we have to back up and repunk? So be it, I mean.
But we understand significant changes will be coming about from Pines, because quite honestly, based on the history of the site, we have to deal with even the prior approvals that never went to Pines.
I mean, the- Can I explain, like, for example, never mentioned Pines, ever. Nobody, no department from town did go, so like.
That's one of the things you understood.
Listen, absolutely. If I show you the roadmap to where after, from the meeting with the administrator, okay, we're going one direction, and then when Rosemary came in, we're doing this, so.
But today we're starting from?
Yes, we're trying to start from square. Based on, we all know that there is a history to this site, and today we're trying to start from square one with regard to moving forward with the use variance and then taking this site and going to site for site plan approval. We understand that we even have to address the, well, Pines may have a concern with any prior approvals from this board, such as the prior use variance and waiver of site plan, because it was never before them as well. We got to address historically, even before our ownership, every prior operation at this site, because it never went to the Pines. We have to address it when we go before them for this application. We understand that, and we understand that's part of the process, and as a result, this site could change significantly because of that, but it's something that, you know, we understand we have to do, and we are doing, going to do, should this board grant use variance approval this evening.
Is the date of the aerials at 10-2-3, because you were the date of the aerial or not?
No, that's not the-
In the aerial.
What's the date of that aerial project?
That was for last meeting.
Yeah, that aerial was, it was prior to my submission, it was-
Bow.
I think it was in, when were we, July, we were supposed to come before?
It was coming in June.
In June, it was around June.
Around June of this year?
Yes, June of this year. And I included it in that photo exhibit packet I submitted shortly thereafter, so it was all part of that.
Does the store well look like that today approximately?
Yes, I mean, things will change.
And again, yeah, things-
100%, yes.
And just so we're clear, we are proposing, my engineer is going to get him next and explain, but just so we're clear, it's going to be more controlled. We're proposing a set storage area that'll be a defined area that John understands he's going to have to keep his materials and pools in and trucks, he's going to have a display area in the front as well, we're going to have designated part of the garage. There's going to be-
Or outdoor storage.
Outdoor storage. That's part of what we're asking for this evening as well, to allow the continuance of that outdoor storage. But again, there's that, there will be controls, and my engineer will get into that, and additional landscaping that we're going to add to the site as well.
Can I ask a question before John sits down?
Sure.
So the application, the plans that were submitted appears to say that the building that you say is retail and garage involve retail, for a total of 2,816 square feet of the parking required to be based on retail. How big actually is that, the size of the retail, just so we're clear?
About eight?
800 square feet.
800 square feet, if you divide it third, one, two, or fourth, so-
So 800?
25% of the square footage you just stated, 2,800 square feet, with 25% of that.
It was one of the bays, it was, it was-
I mean-
Conceivably it was a four bay garage.
Well, years ago, I guess it was, but yes.
You still have three bays and then the fourth bay then became the retail?
Right, all proportioned.
So if that numbers, you know, somewhere around. So it is, it's more than shown on the application?
That's correct. For calculation purposes of parking on the variance plan, we just considered the entire building as retail.
But it's not?
But it's not, it's not.
So talking about the garage though, you had two bays, you do pool mold and repairs, and the third garage you store your, you store your pools?
Yes.
You say you do all your mechanical stuff onsite. Where does that happen? Does it happen in front of the garage, like where the dump trucks and stuff have been?
So sometimes there, sometimes in the back facility, in the back building. The molds have steel, constructive steel and wood, so it could be anywhere. If something happens during production and it needs to be addressed, it can happen there, you perform surgery.
Okay, let me, let me, let me, let me be clearer.
Okay.
I'm talking about mechanical repair onsite. So you fix all your own vehicles?
Okay, yes.
Right? So where does that happen?
In that first bay, we pull trucks in, work on it. Occasionally we'll have a trailer or something sitting outside and work on outside if I can't fit inside.
But some of your trucks are too large to fit in that bay, is that correct?
Trails are too long.
Trails are too long, okay.
Yes.
So your repairs are in the bay or outside? I'm confused.
I'm sorry, half in, half out, 40 foot trailer, the bay's only 19 foot deep. So the door will be open, the trailer back in, lift it up, work on it. If it does get completed, door brought down, continue the next day.
So it's, it's where you have space, you're, you know, you're doing it outside, you're doing it inside?
On that first bay, yes.
But you don't have any designated areas where you're repairing vehicles? Okay. You said something in your testimony, and I didn't quite catch it, there's a building somewhere that has the compressors, the compressor for your entire operation, right?
Yes, that's right here.
So you've got compressors in there for everything?
Yes.
Soundproof?
It's insulated.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to be clear that we've got, you have a single compressor unit-
Yes.
Somewhere out front?
Yes, yes.
Of the, of the sub. Okay. That's all I had, thanks for, oh, one last thing. So, and you touched on it, but I heard two conflicting things. So do you manufacture, is this your only place you do pools? Do you, do you build them here and take them to another store of yours? Do you build them here and take them to another outlet location or another yard for storage?
Yes, so if we do a retail job, let's say we're shipping a DIY kit to Ohio.
What's a DIY kit?
Do it yourself. We sell from our office here, like a DIY kit. So we'll ship it with a truck and guys and ship it to Ohio and do an installation with a family.
So are you manufacturing here for any other locations other than a single designated area?
So I have yards with some equipment and trailers sitting like, I have a yard in Ohio, I have a yard in Pennsylvania. We'll do a retail sale here out of our office. Someone orders a pool, then we will dispatch from here, our, our, our truck with the pool out to let's say Ohio, pick up our excavator from there and go put it in.
Gotcha, so this is like your manufacturing facility for these other locations?
Yes.
I understand, thank you.
But all your retail sales occurs from that office, is that correct?
Yes, our retail sales happens from here.
95% of your manufacturing is related to onsite retail from that building, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Like, we get a lot of Delaware traffic. People come in, we have a yard down in Delaware, so we dispatch out and do an installation.
Thank you. How much do you do with online sales? I know your sign has a website, if you want to go.
Probably 30, 40%, probably 30%, most of it is walk-in traffic or model and girl.
Okay, I missed that. Jason, how much was online?
30% is online sales with the rest being foot traffic or, and referral traffic.
Okay, why don't we move on to the next phase?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'll call my engineer, Mr. Cormac Morrissey. Mr. Morrissey, start off, why don't you give the board a brief background into your qualifications?
I'm a licensed professional engineer.
You didn't have to speak up.
Okay. A little bit of a sort of, I'm a licensed professional engineer, a licensed professional planner, and a licensed since 1994, practicing engineer since 1988, so I've been practicing engineering for the last 35 years. My name is Cor, M.A.C., and I'm O.R.R.I.S.S. I have represented numerous applications over the past 35 years for various boards and contractors. I've actually served on multiple boards, consulting chair for other boards, gallery and managers. I've also currently been reported in the 13th company board, I'm also a board engineer for a financial transactional company board, I'm also a professional engineer.
And, and you've been recognized by, on numerous occasions, by many different land use boards as an expert in the field of engineering, qualified to give testimony before land use boards, is that correct?
Yes.
Unless the chairman wants to hear additional qualifications from Mr. Morrissey, I ask that he be recognized an expert in the field of engineering, qualified to give testimony before this board. Thank you. Mr. Morrissey, can you please describe what the applicant is proposing through this variance plan, understanding it's not the full site plan that we would have to come back for should this be granted this evening?
Sure, before I started, I did not prepare this plan, this plan was prepared by my partner. However, I was with my partner when we first started discussing this plan. Kevin Dixon's out of the state right now, so it was prepared by my partner, who was also, who's licensed professional engineer, 10 years further on than I am. And I also reviewed the file, been out to the site, reviewed the site plan, so I feel qualified to testify on this site plan.
So if you please describe what the, you're proposing with this proposed variance plan at this site?
Certainly, I have a large version of this, so if the board would like to see it. It's the same plan for what it is, it's just a zoom in on the- It's just, it's a larger scale version, and the only, the top is cut off, there's about 90 feet between the top of the storage area and the, and the top of the block.
So let's look first, you actually are proposing with this plan some defined storage area, is that correct?
Yes, so one of the things that we looked at was the idea that there is, you know, as you mentioned, there's things kind of hodgepodge in this area, and we thought that the, a greater efficiency can be obtained through organization. And so what, what Mr. Dixon has designed is a, two areas that would enable the applicant to get to that point where he has a site plan that's compliant and everybody can, can, you know, certainly give a nicer look and more efficiency in terms of the site operations. What you'll see in the front is a beefing up of the landscape area along the project frontage, there's some trees and some, some, some plantings. And on your site plan that was submitted, there's a landscaping schedule that identifies the trees and what would be planted in that area. The applicant proposes to use the existing driveway access, so anybody that's been by there recognizes what that access looks like. So where the efficiency comes in is, right now, there's some, some of the applicant's vehicles that he uses for his, his, his development, that those, that area will be cleaned up and used for parking for people using the retail business. So we have 12 parking spaces, one of which is handicap, for handicap accessibility into the retail sales office. We have a large area, and what you'll see on the right-hand side is an area that would be what we describe as display area. Obviously, if you have a pool store, you know, sometimes seeing the pools makes it more attractive, and it's not uncommon for pool stores to have the finished pools out in the open area. So what you see in the red cross-stashed area is what would be a display of finished pools.
You're also removing this encroachment, this current, that's been existing driveway encroachment, correct?
That's correct. Removing a driveway encroachment in the back, and what you see on your site plan is a turning radius for a tractor trailer to designate that there is adequate turning room to access the rear of the property with the tractor trailer for any deliveries. And as the applicant testified, there would be some tractor trailer deliveries, but many of the, many deliveries have also come in the form of box trucks. So there's adequate circulation and space for those turning movements to get to the rear of the property.
And we're actually adding landscaping down the southern property, is that correct?
That's correct. There's a 20-foot wide landscaped area that's proposed on, on the west side of the property.
Now, you heard me go through the uses, and Mr. Dowramp will testify, and then my opening, and in your professional opinion, can this 9.8 acres, 9.6 acre site accommodate the, what we're proposing as the uses on this site?
In my professional opinion, it can.
Why?
Because it has, especially with the efficiency that we're proposing, it, it has adequate room for the different elements of the site. It has adequate room in the rear to store the molds and the finished pools, and there's actual adequate storage in the buildings, especially with the relocation of the shed and the improvement of the site circulation and site parking. So it, it has enough elements, and I can tell you I've designed more in less space over my 35 years, so I feel confident that we can achieve a compliant site plan that satisfies the needs of this, this applicant.
And just real quick, I want to touch on, I know we talked about the additional landscaping in the front, with the defined parking spaces now that'll be on the site, and landscaping on the side, but we're also adding additional landscaping on the interior in front of the, what is now the office and garage, is that correct?
That is correct. And also, you know, you have the, the house that is to remain to the west side of the proposed parking lot.
I have no further questions for my engineer, Mr. Morrissey.
Does it mark the question, is that paint?
Yes, in fact, on the aerial, I think it shows that it is asphalt.
It's just paint, right?
Is it stone? Oh, it's Millings, but it, it's Millings.
Oh, Millings.
Millings, yeah.
But it was anticipated in the site plan, and certainly when you work through the site plan.
Actually, I can get into that with Mr. Dowramp, if you, if you want. I can touch base on that. Real quick, John. The question was, the single-family home has a septic system, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then the office, what does that have? How do you dispose of the waste when somebody goes to the bathroom in the office?
It has a solid tank that gets pumped, like a porta potty.
Okay, and in the back, back near where the office trailer is, actually in the corner of the property, where the, closest to the stack, there's also a porta potty in the back there-
And in the back, back near where the office trailer is, actually in the corner of the property, where the, closest to the stack, there's also a porta potty in the back there for employees that are working in the manufacturing assembly, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, you mean the septic system will be from where the house is?
That is currently the exist, the only septic system existing on this site at this time is the one at the house, that's correct.
And where are we looking, are you testing?
Well, again, that is something we have to address as part of our Pines. We're gonna have to comply with the new stormwater management regulations. We have not configured a compliant site yet with full site plan, as previously indicated. This site is most likely going to change as a result of us needing site plan approval. But again, we're here on a bifurcated application before spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on the site plan aspect of it. We want to obviously move forward and see if the use is approved first.
And one of the elements of that would certainly be waste for the management. We're not proposing a porta potty to be in the developed site. There would be a septic system that would be sufficient to support the, the proposed use.
Right. We're gonna, and we're gonna have to meet the nitrate dilution standards set forth by Pines.
But you can't have two septic systems on a property, correct? And it's that house and this whole one lot, right?
So, you can have two septic systems on a property, you just can't exceed the given nitrate dilution that Pines requires. So, you can have the septic system for the house, and you can have a septic, septic system for the, for the office and manufacturing facility.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we just can't exceed the threshold of two parts per million nitrate dilution standard, is that correct, at the property line?
That's correct. And we can't, and you don't have enough employees at, twelve to fifteen employees, and two to twelve visitors, and two, two staff members, that's gonna generate a tremendous amount of flow. You're talking about fifteen gallons per day per employee. You know, there's a square footage per manufacturing space, we'd be able to identify that. So, by the time you break it all down, you're probably looking at somewhere around six-hundred gallons per day. The threshold for, as most of you are probably aware, the threshold for septic approval is two thousand gallons. You can't go over two thousand gallons. We need a special permit from the state. We'll be well under that, that barrier.
And again, we'll have to address all that at site plan. We understand that.
So, Mr. Morrissey, you're presenting this just to give us an idea that the site can accommodate the proposed use. There's a lot of room, there's a lot of things you can do.
Certainly.
But just, we're realizing that site plan may be totally different from what its concept is.
This would be what I would consider a concept plan, a first blush of how we would envision the site plan setting up. Obviously, a lot of the elements are, you know, sort of set themselves up to this type of plan, you know, whether the parking spaces in the back or exactly where they're at, or shifted over, or maybe there's a couple more required, exactly where the septic system goes. All those things get fleshed out when you're doing the site design.
And again, we wouldn't be back before this board until we get a certificate of filing from Pines, and they're comfortable with the major site plan we would be proposing here.
Thank you very much.
My next witness is Joseph Kuyakowski.
Evening, everybody.
Joe, can you please give the board a little bit of your background and what your specialty is?
Sure. I'm a managing consultant with Trinity Consultants. We specialize in air quality permitting, compliance, health risk assessment. I've been doing it for nearly twenty years within the, within the state and for a total of working in the field for about twenty-five years now.
All right. And you reviewed the air pollution control permit and certificate to operate issued by the NJDEP to Mr. Dowrampel's company, is that correct?
Correct.
And what did the permit require to meet New Jersey, the air quality standards?
So, the permit requires, first up, first off, the permit establishes limits that they're allowed to emit of VOC styrenes, basically coming off of the resins. There are ton-per-year limitations that are in there. And as part of the operation, the permit requires that a fifty-foot stack is placed in place to, to exhaust the operations. And that, that stack and the blower that's associated must be run during the time that they're manufacturing the, the pool molds.
What does the stack and the blower do?
So, part of the application process, the DEP had run the air dispersion model, EPA-accepted model, the, the, per the guidance of New Jersey, to assess health risk associated with any emissions coming off of this process. As part of that health risk assessment, it was defined that at least a fifty-foot stack must be installed to allow for the dispersion properties of the atmosphere to ensure that down at ground level where people are breathing the air off-site, the risks are negligible, health risks are negligible.
And you said the size of the stack had to be a minimum of fifty feet.
Correct.
But Mr. Dowrampel actually constructed a sixty-five-foot stack at this site to actually further minimize that impact, is that correct?
Correct. With air dispersion, the higher you go, the more, the more the air has time to mix with the general ambient air, and thus reducing any concentrations in the effluent from the stack.
And in addition to reviewing the permit, you actually visited the site, witnessed the manufacturing operations, witnessed the actual stack and blower operating, is that correct?
That's correct. And it was in operation when I, when I was there.
And in addition to it being having a stack and a blower, it also contains a filter, is that correct?
Yes, as stipulated by the permit, there's also filter requirements, MERV thirteen-rated filter requirements. Those filters are in place because for the, as, as John had indicated before, some of the process is manually rolled, but there's also the spray guns. So, there's a risk of a little bit of atomization of the, the resins. That atomization gets pulled in through the, the filters and pulled out of the air before, before it goes out to reduce any particulates. And that, that is all stipulated by New Jersey DEP regulations of having those controls to knock, knock down any particulates coming out and up through the stack.
And in your profession, the actual operation being conducted by Mr. Dowrampel at this site, the manufacturing process is minor in nature, is that correct?
Yes, this is not considered a major or Title V, you also may hear the term Title V source, this is not considered a major source operation, this is a minor source operation.
Who, who monitors it, to check to see if it's functioning?
The, the DEP, as part of the stipulation in the permits, can inspect up to three times in that timeframe. They did actually conduct an inspection back in twenty-two. And essentially, it's on the facility to maintain the records and to be operating per the, per the permit. Those inspections are unannounced when they do come around. I've insisted regularly, I get calls from my, from my other clients to come in when they do have inspections, just to walk through and understand what's going on. But it is typically a spot inspection by the department. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, the requirement itself calls for MERV thirteen filtration in the stack. It's got, the stack is designed with a, with a large blower, so essentially, you're pulling a negative pressure on the building as a whole.
Is fresh air being drawn along the length of the stack, or just coming from the block?
Fresh air is only coming in from doorways or anything. You're basically creating a negative pressure inside the building to, to, to ensure that you're capturing and exhausting properly out, at the top.
Is it thirteen?
MERV thirteen is, it's the rating, MERV, M E R V, it's a...
How many MERV thirteen?
It's a sixty-four square feet based on the permit. And that's stipulated by the permit. What was it? I, I observed the outside part of it, I didn't go and open up the, the, the inside. I don't know if John can speak to how it's, how it's assembled and put in there, if he has any detail on the actual filter.
It's a three-layer, sixty-four-square-foot grid. Three layers deep.
How often do you change them?
Once a week. Yes. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Fan come on automatically?
No, nothing's, it's manual. Yes. I've never seen a facility like that, that's interesting, but no. They just have us turn it on a half hour before we start spraying to create the negative air. And then, we keep it on after we're done, while the curing process is taking place. We don't, it's not, it's not pulled in.
John, so you detect the discharge from that stack that, like, maybe those will say, I was, you're walking the street, you're probably starting there, with that, any particles, dust are going out?
You can testify.
With the, with the filtration, you're, you're getting a very high, greater than ninety percent control. And any particulates that do make it through the filtration, you wouldn't, you wouldn't even perceive they're gonna just get caught up into the air, whatever's left of it. And I, and I can attest, just being out at the site yesterday to do a walkthrough, there was no evidence of any, any dust or anything on the stacks. Doing what I do for the twenty-plus years, whenever I walk onto any site, there are certain things I look for right away to make sure of. That, I don't go that far, but, but yes, you know, I just, I kind of look for the, the key things that, that would also be a trigger or a concern if an inspector were to come on. I kind of try to, I try to look at a facility's operations through the eyes of a state inspector to, to basically ensure that they're operating as the permit stipulates. And, and I did observe that on my, on my site visit out there.
Is this a year-round operation?
Yes.
No, the only thing that we do is, production's a lot slower, so you won't get, seven taken a day or two, it'll take three days, what have you, because we need our ambient temperature. So, it's just a little bit longer process.
Building is not heated?
Building's heated. Building has heat.
Is it air-conditioned?
No. It sure was.
So, for this to work, it has to be closed, doors have to be closed.
The, the size of the blower will, will pull a negative draw, and, and actually, to the comment, John, I think you would attest this as well, that when, once you bring the mold in, you want to roll down the door at least to a certain point anyway, because you don't, just won't wind blowing into the building and blowing, stirring up stuff in that process. But, yeah, the, the blower itself is going to draw a negative pressure, negative flow or inward flow.
Through the softens, softens? Yeah. It pulls the air through the softens when the door is completely closed for the, you know.
It's just a regular mold on?
Yeah. Yes. Right, no, it's just calculated that we had enough. Look, prevent.
I can give you the range. So, the max, the max ACFM on the system is twenty-one thousand, one hundred twenty-seven. And I believe, you know, that was what was placed in the permit, that's ACFM. And I believe they even upsized it a little bit more to increase the flow.
Yeah. You actually, the blower is larger than what the permit actually required, is that correct?
Correct. That's, that's, you, you upsized, upsized it. So, they're, they're pulling, they're pulling, even, even walking in there, walking through the doorways just the other day, I noted, I could notice the air being, yeah, you're pulling a lot of air in.
It's a four-horsepower motor. Okay.
So, odor, odor is controlled essentially by dispersion through, through most processes that are operating. So, as that goes up, and, and that's a good question, because the styrene or the resins and the gel coats do have an odor to them. Same thing as a spray paint booth, similar type of odor. The air, the air, the effective flow rate going up, along with the effective plume height, because you have that flow rate, you already start at about a sixty-foot release height, the air continues to go higher. You get the turbulent eddies and the mixing of the air. I had no observation of odors anywhere but when I was standing inside the building where they had just actively sprayed out, out, to the outside with the...
So, odor around the property here and...
My, my observation while I was out there, which it was good that they were actually in the process of doing one, doing one of these, that I had no observation of odors outside, even, even within the property line, which, you know, obviously, the further and further you go away, an odor will dissipate.
Right, that's what I'm asking, if you're on the property, right?
Right. So, as I walked out around that building, I, I perceived no odors. The only time I did pick it up was when I went inside the building where they were active, they had, I literally just finished spraying that boat when we were there, or that boat, jeez, the pool.
Any other questions? Spell his last name. Spell your last name, John.
K W I A T K O W S K I. Believe it or not, I'm three-quarters Irish, even with that big Polish name, my kids just love that. I'm just an Irishman.
Any other questions?
My next witness is Ms. Tiffany Morrissey, as my professional planner. Ms. Morrissey, I know has testified before this board on previous occasions and been recognized as an expert in the field of planning, qualified to give testimony. Unless the chairman wants to hear her background, I would ask that she be recognized as an expert in the field of planning, qualified to give testimony. Thank you.
Ms. Morrissey, as you're aware, we have to satisfy the positive criteria in order to this board, in order for this board to grant our use variance. Can you please explain what the positive criteria is and how we satisfy it with this application?
Yes, and just before I begin, I do want to put on the record that my license is still current and in good standing. So, just for the record. So, if it's, the, the proposal here is for use variance for the two principal uses, for the limited manufacturing associated with the retail operation of the large fiberglass pools, and for the outdoor storage and display area that goes along with that. The property located in the Pine Lands Highway Commercial Zone along Route Forty is nine-point-six acres in size, which is substantially larger than the minimum lot size for your Pine Lands Highway Commercial Zoning District, has over four hundred feet of frontage on Route Forty and almost a thousand feet deep. In terms of the proposed uses on the property, we would maintain the existing residential use, and there would be maintained a business operation. The site in two thousand and fifteen had an approval for three uses on the property. It was a single-family use, a seal, striping, they do the striping on the highways, business, and agricultural use. So, we would be amending that or presenting a new application that would maintain the single-family residential and add the operations that we've just spent an hour and a half talking about. The criteria for a use variance, it requires that we meet both the positive and the negative criteria. The positive criteria has to involve a showing that the site advances the purposes of zoning, and more specifically, showing that the site and the use are particularly suited to one another, therefore promoting the general welfare. In this instance, and on this application, it's my professional opinion that there would be three purposes of zoning, which would be advanced on, through the granting of this application. The first, of course, and I will provide some testimony to support, the first is that the site and the use are particularly suited to one another, because there are unique features, both the site and the use, that lend themselves to get, to work good together on this property, and therefore, they promote the general welfare. Additionally, it's my professional opinion that the site advances purpose G of the municipal land use law to provide sufficient space in an appropriate location for a variety of uses, including recreation, residential, commercial, and industrial uses, both public and private, according to the respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. And I also believe it would advance the purpose of zoning H to encourage the location and design of transportation routes, which will promote the free flow of traffic while discouraging the location of such facilities and routes, which would, would result in congestion and blight. So, why does this site meet this criteria? Why is the site and the use particularly suited to one another to begin with? This property has a historic multiple use, multiple uses on the property. When you look at the zoning for this property and the permitted uses in this zone, your plan, Pine Lands Highway Commercial District, which was created in nineteen eighty-two, amended through nineteen ninety-nine, created because of the Pine Lands Comprehensive Management Plan right around nineteen eighty-two, you're, it is on the north side, right, yeah, north side of Route Forty. The south side of this area is also highway commercial, but it's not within the Pine Lands. The highway commercial zone runs from east to west throughout the town. It goes down Route Forty and turns down Route Forty-seven. There are some pockets of light manufacturing on that, on, along that area, as well as, as you get towards this portion of the township, you have some village areas. But the primary highway commercial zone starts at the beginning of town at Tuckahoe Road and extends west through the township. The permitted uses in the Pine Lands Highway Commercial Zone include a variety of uses. They include agriculture, which is existing in and around the area, agricultural equipment sales and services, agricultural commercial and processing facilities. sales and services, agricultural commercial and processing facilities, garden centers, nursery and greenhouses, building materials and garden supplies, automotive repair shops, including auto body repair, restaurants excluding drive-through restaurants, convenience commercial, government buildings, public utility substations, child cares, and veterinary hospitals and clinics. In addition to those permitted uses, there are permitted accessory uses. In specific for this site, there's a permitted accessory use which includes limited manufacturing and assembly incidental to the onsite retail business, such as, but not limited to, bakery, silk screening, et cetera. So when we look at the permitted uses in the zone and we look at what's there, building material and garden supplies is a possibility that this falls under and is very similar to. Pools are used in construction, they go in your backyard. Pools are common in single-family residential developments, and you have the sales that go associated with that. So the limited manufacturing and assembly incidental to the onsite retail that goes with that part of that other use in that zone is very similar to, if not substantially similar to, what is existing on this property and proposed on this property. In terms of this site and this, and the aspects of this property, when you look at the surrounding area, you have a variety of uses. You have across the street, a trucking company and an auto repair facility in general proximity to the site. You also have just up the street, also in the Pine Lands Highway Commercial Zone, the Stone and Garden Center and your RV dealership. And if you go just past Main Street, you have additional uses, Delsey Bus Garage, a mobile dredging yard and building supply, a truck repair shop, a deck and fence superstore, agricultural truck logistics, to name a few of the businesses that are in this general area of the township in your highway commercial district. The site being over, substantially oversized, the minimum lot size is 3.4 acres, this is a 9.6 acre property. Being substantially oversized lends itself to the ability to accommodate this type of retail operation and sales. Most retail sales, when you think about retail sales, you think of small things. Pools are substantially larger, somewhat like boat sales, or even RV sales. They're much larger structures, and they require much more space. The property has the ability to accommodate the outdoor storage and display of the pools, so people can come to the site, look at the pools, see them in their final size and finish, and decide what they wish to purchase. And they can also decide to have a pool constructed for them, specifically designed that they may not be available onsite. So the site provides enough space for all of that to occur on the property. And you can see from the proposed site plan design that there are improvements associated with this aspect of the development, which would include a clear area for storage and display, clear area for parking, improvements in the front, yes, there's existing vehicles and trucks stored out front that will be shifted to the rear, and the site is large enough to accommodate all of the operations that go along with the limited manufacturing associated with the fiberglass pools, as well as providing ample room for the storage of the equipment in the rear, and providing ample room, and this, this is a blow-up of the zoomed-in section of the site plan that you see on the exhibit board here, I don't know if we marked that.
Please.
So that would be, what, A3 or A2?
We'll mark the aerial as A1, and the blown-up variance plan is A2.
So.
Sure.
So exhibit A2 shows a zoomed-in area of the site plan, but there's more land area, again, it's almost 1,000 feet deep, so there's ample room to provide septic that's necessary and onsite stormwater management. All of this would be conditioned through a Pine Lands approval and a certificate of filing with a subsequent site plan from this board. But the site is large enough to accommodate this type of retail development. Not all sites would be large enough to accommodate this type of retail, size of retail development. Some of the questions that Mr. Borelli asked regarding the percentage of retail to the percentage of manufacturing aspect of the property, when you have, when you generally look at percentage of use, you do see that there's a larger area that goes to the manufacturing here, but that's because the product that's being manufactured is substantially large. I think they said 55 feet long a pool can be. I like the smaller pools, but they do have much larger pools as well. So you need the space to accommodate that. So you can't really relate the percentage of accessory manufacturing in terms of size, it's more, you don't need the manufacturing if you don't have the retail, because the retail drives the manufacturing, and they come to the site to visit and see the product and purchase on the property. Other aspects that make this site and this use particularly suited to one another include its proximate location. So located on Route 40 is a major highway, you see lots of traffic, in fact, that's the only way I go to the Delaware Memorial Bridge. I never go up the expressway and down 295, this is my favorite route, to get out of New Jersey and go south. You have ease of access to Route 55 from this area, you can stay on major highways and get to Delaware easily, you can get to 295 easily, you can get to 55 easily, in terms of the traffic network that is around here. So this site is in a unique location to offer the ability to provide the appropriate transportation of routes and network for the type of deliveries that are required here. Whereas if this were in an area that was not on a highway system, they might have to go through smaller county roads or local roads in order to deliver the products, and here, this site offers that opportunity for not to be an issue. Your ordinance does not, excuse me, your ordinance provides standards in terms of site development for the planned, or Pine Lands Highway Commercial Zone. We would meet all of the setback requirements. We talked about buffering. I reviewed your ordinance in terms of buffering. The buffering requirements are only required adjacent to a residential use. The best part of this site layout is the maintaining that existing residential use, because to the left of this property is an existing residential use, but it pretty much follows, the residential portion of that property follows the portion of the residential over here. There is room for buffering, 25 to 50 feet is required, based on what your ordinance standards say, under Article 12, to provide the buffering to meet the screening that's necessary. We do propose landscaping down that property line currently, and we can enhance that as part of any site plan application to ensure appropriate screening. Again, the site will be re-laid out, there'll be a designated storage area, it'll have more delineation to it than what it has today. Improvements have not been made, because we have to get through this process before we put more money into the property. The area and your commercial zoning, when you drive down Route 40 and you enter Franklin Township, this area, when you enter Franklin Township, from here until just past Main Street, is really your main area that you see most of the commercial development, in either the Pine Lands Highway Commercial or the non-Pine Lands Highway Commercial. After you get past Main, just past Main Street, you tend to have more residential and more agricultural and farm stands, even though it's still zoned highway commercial. And then you see a bolster of your highway commercial where 40 and 47 come together in that general area, and then you don't really see any other major areas for, with development. This area already having those businesses in the surrounding area, a truck, a trucking company, auto repair facility, RV sales, all that lend itself to the continued development in accordance with what would be expected for your highway commercial district. The other thing I want to address as part of this is why fiberglass pools, and what's the need for this in this location? And you asked a question, where were you before? And he indicated that his past operation was in Hamilton. So this local area is a, an area that there is a need for fiberglass pool installation, there is a business here. And it's interesting, because when you look at market reports, in March of 2023, there was an article about swimming pool market size and growth from 2023 to 2028. And it notes that there is an increase in the usage of pools with the building of a large number of residential constructions and hotels across the world. Swimming pools are becoming one of the most essential lifestyle facilities. Fiberglass pools are actually one of the more affordable types of pools, and because they have different features to them, that are safer in terms of how they're installed, and what is needed in terms of how you can maintain your water quality when they are installed. Swimming pools by market type, that same article goes on to say, that fiberglass pools are anticipated to be the dominant one in the global swimming pool market. Fiberglass pools are handcrafted in mold pools that arrive at your property ready to be installed, making it easier and faster for installation, and showing that there is a market and a continued growth in this market for this type of operation to occur. Again, this area and this general location in its proximity to, to the larger region provides a unique opportunity for this use to, to work on this property. When we look at all of those aspects in terms of the positive criteria, that the site and the use are particularly suited to one another, given the features of the site and the unique aspects of this type of limited manufacturing use, that the residential use can coexist with the proposed business use on this property, and you heard from our engineer that the septic would be able to be accommodated based on the anticipated flows. The site also would promote sufficient space in an appropriate location for a variety of uses, and provide an advancement in terms of the, what is the purpose, to encourage a location and design of transportation routes that promote the free flow of traffic. That's the positive criteria. That's the first prong of the use variance test. But we also have to address the negative criteria. Do you want to question me? It's okay, I'll wait, Mike, I'm sorry.
I love it.
Okay, I'll keep going.
Listen, as it goes to the negative criteria, which is two parts. First, you have to address the substantial detriment to the public good.
Yes.
The granting of these use variances causes substantial detriment to the public good?
No, in my professional opinion, they would not. And I base that on several factors. First, you had the testimony from our engineer that indicated how the site can accommodate the development. We will require a site plan approval, so any impact from this development will be addressed through an approved site plan, major site plan by this board, if approved for the use variance. It would also be conditioned upon conformance and receipt of a certificate of filing from the Pine Lands Commission. So those aspects of this development would be controlled and able to be handled. Additionally, when you look at the permitted uses in this zone compared to the proposed use that we have here, while this use may have larger features because of the type of, because it's a fiberglass pool, it's an in-ground pool, there are other uses that could create similar improvements to the property and similar impacts to the area, and some may say even greater impacts in terms of what is proposed, because you heard our trips in and out of this property and the deliveries that we have are small in comparison to what you may have for an automotive repair shop, or a truck storage facility, or a garden center with more retail traffic, or convenience commercial, or public utility substations, these other uses that are permitted, agricultural equipment sales and service, so large John Deere vehicles porked on the property and being serviced, similar to what you see further down Route 40. So there, there are other uses that would have similar impacts to what we propose here. Additionally, in terms of the impact to the public good, is the fact that we have, and you heard from Mr. Kwikowski, did that right, it's been so many years, regarding the air quality and the stack filter that was installed. Not only did we get the air quality permit issued, we exceeded what was required. So instead of 50 feet, we have 65 feet in height. We upgraded to make sure that we did not create any negative impact in terms of, in terms of air quality, and there are no odors associated with this that are available or noticeable outside of the building, and you heard that testimony as well. And lastly, the aspect of the operations in terms of noise, because there was a question from your board engineer as to the, the noise controls, this would be subject to any noise control standards that you have, the State Noise Control Act, that room that has the compressors is insulated, it is a commercial zone, and if there's any need to enhance that, it would be enhanced, but we haven't had any indication that that noise creates an issue beyond what is permitted in a highway commercial district for highway commercial businesses, for the negative criteria to the public good.
In addition, you got to establish the point of the negative criteria, if the granting of the use variance would not constitute substantial impairment in the intent of the zone plan, would the granting of the use variance constitute a substantial impairment in the plan ordinance?
In my professional opinion, no, it would not.
Why not?
So this, again, is your Pine Lands Highway Commercial Zone. It is located along Route 40, and it's consistent with the goals and objectives in your master plan. This zone was created in 1999, and it was expanded across the street as part of the, from the existing non-Pine Lands areas. When the zone was created, well, not the zone, the zone was created in 1982 and amended in 1999. There were recommendations throughout all of your master plan reports, going back from 1999, 2004, and 2011 reexamination report, and the last reexamination report of 2013. Those reports included maintaining the goals and objectives that exist in the master plan and not amending those goals and objectives. One of those is a goal to provide a circulation system that is safe, efficient, environmentally sensitive, and respectful of the community's rural character. That goal works well with this site being on Route 40, where you would want your highway commercial and larger users, so that the impacts from traffic are located on the state highway system. But more importantly, there was an assumption and a goal included in your reports that include that Franklin Township seeks to diversify and expand its economy, and the goal underneath that is to provide Franklin Township with a broad-based economic foundation, and to expand opportunities for commercial and industrial development, and encourage a sound fiscal mix of future uses. Those goals and objectives maintained throughout your master plan reports. And it's also noted, within your 2004 master plan report, that there are new opportunities for economic development proposed along Harden Highway from Main Road to Tuckahoe Road. The north side of this is in the Pine Lands, and the south is not, so two districts are proposed, and that's where the expansion of the highway commercial on the south side of this came into play. This area has been shown and designated for an area where you can enhance your economic development opportunities. This development, as proposed here, with this business operation, provides that advancement of that purpose in your master plan. I will also note that one of the things that we have to address in terms of the master plan and the zoning ordinance, specifically the master plan, is the Medici standard for a use variance. And that is, why didn't you allow for this use in your master plan and your zoning ordinance if it was appropriate for this site? And I take you to the idea of master plan reexamination reports, and it's clear throughout all of your reexamination reports. One of the things that I noted in many of your reexamination reports that you don't see in many other municipalities is that you actually look at zoning variances that were granted and try to see what needs to be changed and updated. Your master plan was last reexamined in 2013. The municipal land use law requires that you reexamine your master plan every 10 years, so you're due for a reexamination report. What that tells me, though, is that in 10 years, things have changed. Not only have things changed, consumer buying patterns have changed, what people want to see and use have changed, how people live has changed. We went through COVID in 2020, and a lot of people decided that they needed to have more time at home, and you saw a surge of people doing home improvements, including backyard improvements, which increased the pool, swimming pool industry. Your master plan has, your ordinance has different uses that are listed in there, that I believe that this use falls within those, those uses. However, your ordinance doesn't include many definitions for those uses and guidelines in terms of the ambiguity, ambiguity between those uses and what is defined in your code. In my professional opinion, I think that this use is what is anticipated for a highway commercial zone, and that given the opportunity to look at the other surrounding uses that have large facilities associated with them, trucks, RVs, and other aspects, that this site and this zoning and your master plan would be appropriate to be relooked at in terms of allowing for this type of use in this location and this type of development scheme. Did I miss anything?
Does the board have any questions for Ms. Morsey?
Sorry. I can continue, but, no, I'm kidding.
Good job. My last witness, and really to address some of the history of this site and operations at this site, because I know that was in your engineers' report, is Mr. Jerry Truster.
I know he did, okay.
Now, Mr. Truster, you were the prior owner of this site, correct?
Yes.
And you've lived in Franklin Township for how long?
Um, 40 years.
Okay. And you're familiar with the history of this site, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Even prior to your ownership, is that correct?
Yes.
Even prior to your ownership, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you heard in 2015, there was a use variance granted by this board for three uses. That was farming, use, residential use, and a line striping and seal coating use.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Subsequent to that approval, there was actually five uses being operated out of that site, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can you explain to the board what the five operations were that were being operated out of that site?
When the owner, Ed Clark, owned it?
Yes.
Okay, so Ed Clark got himself in a little trouble with his line striping business and seal coating, so, you can't?
Just talk about it.
So he gets himself in a little bit of trouble, and in order, and tried to save the property, his daughter takes it over. She rents each individual bay out to a different business, one being auto repair, one being a guy was doing some paintwork in there, and another one, the other bay was a Spanish kid doing landscaping, to try to save this property so Ed wouldn't lose it.
And in addition to that, they were also continuing to run the line striping and seal coating business?
She was still running that.
And they still had the residential and the farming operation, correct?
Correct, yes.
How about even before the 2015 approval, how was this property operated?
So I believe it was a Korean guy owned it. He had a, he grew tilapia in there, had three tanks, one in each bay. That's who Ed purchased from. But prior to that, I believe it was an auto and paint body shop. I don't know who owned it, maybe, sitting with Mr. Hogan for a couple hours talking. I think he told me, Mr. Burrell, Ralph Burrell, may have owned it at some point, did paint and bodywork and stuff in there. I don't know. This is what, this is what he told me.
Only what you know.
Only what I know.
Only what you know.
So prior to that, they did repair, and I got involved when Ed purchased the property. That is basically when I.
When did you purchase the property?
It's 2018.
Okay. 2018. So at some time between 2015 and 2018, there was, you're familiar with five businesses being run out of that site?
I am.
Okay. I got no further questions from Mr. Truster.
That's all of the witnesses I have.
Thank you, Chairman and Board members. We did a report dated August 31st, 2023. That was the most updated report based upon continued information from the applicant. Again, it's in the Pinelands Highway Commercial Zone. I'm going to skip over some of this stuff and jump to page five. So they're asking for the use variance, and they're asking for multiple uses on one site. Ms. Tiffany says that the proposed use is similar to building materials and garden supplies, which is listed in our permitted use category. Also, so the board then needs to decide that if this use and the, what's under accessory uses on the next page says, limited manufacturing and assembly incidental to onsite retail business, such as bakery and silk screen. Is the manufacturing of pools, does that kind of fit in that category? Accessory uses are usually subordinate principal use in size, but we heard the argument that, you know, the pools are just naturally that much larger. So the board will have to weigh that. I'd like to jump into page seven and our technical comments, most of which I'd like to be addressed by the applicant and the applicant's professionals. But as I understand it, for paragraph one, I wanted to know what all of the existing and proposed uses were on the site. As I heard, there's a house that's going to be occupied by the owner, that there's retail pool sales, there's manufacturing of pools, there's outdoor pool storage, there's a type of a contractor's yard where they have the equipment for the insulation of pools and septic, and there's a component of trucking and trailers to deliver these pools to the various locations. So that's what I see as the uses on this site. I'd like to jump down to paragraph four. I'm back on that, I'm sorry, paragraph five. The various plan talks about that block building for retail use, and I just, I just want to be clear. So we heard testimony that it has four bays, one of the bays became a retail use, and that calculated out that 703 square feet. If you go to page 10 of my report, there's a photo of the front of that building, and this question is, I guess, directed to the applicant. Where in this photo is the retail sale? How is I as a customer, where do I go with that? You have the photos on page 10?
It's being blocked by that. Yeah. Yeah. It's actually blocked by the truck right here, but this says office. This says office, and it's this entire portion right here.
So it's behind that vehicle with the yellow.
Yes.
So I guess the board needs to determine is, you know, how accessible is retail sale, and is that really what's going on here? I don't know. We heard testimony about the manufacturing process and the other things that are going on on the site. We heard about numbers, vehicles, employees. We touched on buffer strips. Our ordinance, paragraph 12 of my letter on page eight, required buffer strips. There's a little bit of a buffer there. You could consider buffer strips, you know, during the use variance. Is that important to the use variance?
They were saying 25.
Well, our ordinance says, I'll read it. Buffer strips shall be provided when required according to the provisions of Article 12 of the chapter, provided that no buffer strips have less than 75 feet, and provided that this may be increased by 100 feet by the planning board if deemed necessary for public interest. So 75 feet-ish.
Question whether it was a supersede.
That's, I guess, the real question is, if you're, if a condition of any use variance would be granted, would you require buffering? That's the real question. Size really doesn't matter. Do you really require them? Do you want them as a condition of being used? Our ordinance only allows outdoor storage, only allowed indoor storage of products, and they're doing outdoor storage. And I'm sorry, I didn't bring this up earlier. Paragraph 19, the applicant should identify the use and operation of the onsite generator and the smokestack. We heard about the smokestack. Is there an onsite generator, or is that something different? It's listed on the site plan. Do we run a generator on the site?
There is a backup generator.
Yeah, you got a group, I'm sorry.
There is a backup generator.
For when you lose power, or is there not enough power on the site?
Will we lose power?
Strictly for emergencies?
Yes.
Thank you. We didn't hear any testimony about signage proposed for this operation. I guess that will be addressed during site plan.
Yes.
There's some somewhat of signs out there. There's pools out there to attract your attention with banners in those pools, or water trucks with the name on it parked right out front. So there is a type of signage going on there now, but none of which is permitted by our ordinance, and something that really should be addressed on a permanent basis as part We heard testimony, paragraph 24, we heard testimony about the previous uses, and you probably remember that word here at the store, I guess in 2012, when they were doing the line striping. Some of those conditions were no outside storage, no public for retail use, the residence must be occupied by the owner, the business can't be a rental, there are certain aesthetic improvements to the buildings and to the properties, including paving the driveway, and the preservation of two large trees. That was what was continued, what was a part of the previous zoning board approval for the site. I don't know how much of that is important now, but it was something that was important when the board granted that previous approval. I don't know what the two large trees were that were important, but I don't know if that's part of it or not. This is something to think about. And obviously, this is just use variance. There's a lot of other hurdles that the applicant will have to go through with Pinelands, and again, so those are my comments. Any questions?
And also, I'd just like to indicate, in our photo exhibit, we have pictures of the interior of the office for everyone to see. We do show pictures of the office, and there we have, I believe, three different pictures, so you can see the actual office inside that section.
Mike, I have a question for you. They don't have Pinelands approval. Can they continue to operate without that approval, and they have to cease operations until they get that?
Well, we've been in litigation, and the matter still is in litigation, having been an appeal of your prior denial. They filed an appeal of that denial. In addition to that, they filed a count against the township indicating that, based upon their discussions and the permits they received, that they should be permitted to continue. It would be up to the township to make that move to stop them. This board can't really make the move to stop them. That has not been done up to this point. Technically, should they be? No. If you look at the Black Letter of the law, sure, then they have to get Pinelands approval, they have to get other approvals. But that is part of what's before the court, the written order, and then they would do this first, and then go to Pinelands.
No, again, no.
Correct. I still say you're probably considering it as a blind slip. We can get to that when the time comes, when you're deliberating about whether you're granting or denying, but if you were to grant it, I'd say you should be on the condition that you're not approving anything that's out there. You're approving the concept that that can be done here, and all those issues will be addressed as part of site. Probably can get to that.
That's correct. We understand we have to acknowledge that as part of site plan. Again, with regard to Pinelands, again, initially, a zoning permit was issued. A zoning permit is defined as, means a document signed, under the municipal land use law, means a document signed by the administrative officer, which is required by ordinance as a condition precedent to the commencement of a use or the erection, construction, reconstruction, alteration, conversion, or installation of a structure or building, and which acknowledges that such used structure or building complies with the provisions of the municipal zoning ordinance or variance therefrom duly authorized by a municipal agency pursuant to Section 47 and 57 of this act. Again, there was things done here that probably in history should not have been done. I mean, the original, the original zoning application probably should have been denied for the simple fact it wasn't signed by the owner, but it wasn't. Had it been denied then, then none of this would have happened. There are certain, again, there was issues that were part of the litigation that we're not here to focus on tonight. We're focused here tonight on the use variance. I know we got into a little bit about the zoning permit and certain actions, but tonight is for the use variance. And to get in with regard to the uses we're proposing, again, regardless of whether or not it fits into one of the permitted uses within your section, we're here tonight for a use variance approval. And the uses that we're asking this board to approve is a residential use, manufacturing and assembly. We feel it's incidental onsite retail. If you do not feel it's incidental onsite retail, then we're asking for manufacturing, assembly, we're asking for a retail use, we're asking for outdoor storage, which we currently have, and if your engineer called it a construction yard, if he deems that a separate use, then we're asking for that as well. We noticed for all of this in accordance with the notice requirements, and as you're soliciting in the beginning, we comply with the notice requirements, but we're here tonight for a use variance to continue the operation of the site as it exists, with the understanding that we will have to make modifications and adding some controls to the site with regard to what we propose in our variance plan, which will probably change as a result of having to go to Pinelands. Quite honestly, the last approval granted by this board in 2015 should have gone to Pinelands. A change of use or adding a use to a site is considered development under the Pinelands. You need a Pinelands certificate of filing for that, even if you're asking for a waiver of site plan. The only time Pinelands does not want to hear it is if you're going to go forward later on in site plan, because then they'll have an opportunity to review site plan. And it never went to Pinelands then. We got to correct that, as I indicated earlier. We now have to go before Pinelands and deal with the history of the site and prior approvals and prior operations here that were approved without going to Pinelands.
Does it mean the applicant is not going?
It's every applicant. Quite honestly, with the last use variance approval, it should have gotten a certificate of filing before it appeared before this board, but it didn't. And we are here, again, there was a zoning permit issued, which no one indicated, you need to go before the board for approval or anything of that nature. There was plans issued to your, permits applied for and plans reviewed by your construction department, asked revisions required, asked for by your construction department, onsite inspections by your construction official. No one indicated that he needed any type of approval until later on in the process, and then he tried to come before the board and get approval in November. Now, he didn't have counsel, he didn't have professionals at that time. It was denied, and that's what ended up, before the complaint and the prerogative writ in the Superior Court, and that's why we're here tonight for this remand hearing.
I do. All right. I attended the last two zoning board meetings in which the marijuana farm applications were denied. The residents were very vocal about their opposition to the facilities, and the board seemed to agree and deny their applications. Among the reasons given were the potential for bad odors, unreasonable hours of operation, light and sound pollution, decreased property values. While I applaud the zoning board for listing the residents and addressing their concerns, I've been dealing with all these issues for the past two years. While everyone knows that marijuana facilities have the potential to put off odors, it's a natural odor with no known effects except for the smell itself. The facility that operates next to me for the past two years sprays fiberglass resin on a nearly daily basis. This is not a natural substance, as known to carry with it many side effects. Most days, I cannot walk outside without smelling an automotive body shop. It's gotten so bad on certain days that I've had friends and family leave my pool area and go home. While working outside this summer on two separate occasions, I was nauseated to the point of almost getting sick. I've been walking on Blue Bell as far over as Tuckahoe and smells fumes being released from the spraying. I have people working no more than 500 feet from my home in full Tyvek suit with respirators. Not only are they spraying resin all day long, but they're also cutting the pools out in the open, creating dust that goes and lays on the ground. How long until these chemicals make their way into our groundwater? Who's going to be responsible when another resident gets sick? In the previously mentioned meeting, the residents were outraged that the proposed, sorry, proposed facility was going to be operating seven days a week on a nine-to-five schedule. Meanwhile, the business next to me starts work most mornings before 6:00 a.m., and most times continues works in the late hours of the night. This doesn't just involve the spraying of pools, but also the moving of big equipment. I hear backup indicators for machinery along with the pounding of forms and hammers all day long. This goes on seven days a week, including most holidays. About five months after the buildings were completed, the owners installed nine ultra-bright lights that do not have any form of diffuser on them. They're so bright, they illuminate the entire backyard and shine brightly in the back rooms of my house. Another reason given for the denial of the pot facility was due to decreased property values. While anyone that's driven by my house in the past few years can see that, on most days, it looks like I'm living next to a junkyard. The once well-manicured field is now full of discarded pool scraps, about a half dozen trucks, other non-functioning vehicles, some of which have been in pieces for months, and miscellaneous shed shipping containers, and 55-gallon drums of chemicals. There's no way this isn't substantially bringing down the value of my home and the immediate properties surrounding it. I find the proposed use variance tonight to, quote, "to allow limited manufacturing incidental to onsite retail business" to be very misleading. The township description, they give, they use as an example of a bakery producing baked goods for their business. This is a far cry from the manufacturing of pools with heavy equipment. This is language used to describe a Pinelands Highway Commercial Zone, and pool manufacturing is not one of the permitted uses as stated in Article 29 of the township's land development documentation. The fact that they are manufacturing pools and storing the majority of their merchandise outdoors means that the property would have to be zoned light industrial, which it is not, and which they are not asking for here tonight. They've been manufacturing pools from scratch since the last meeting almost two years ago. If granted a variance by the board tonight, I'm sure they will continue to do so. Is that my time? Okay. Thank you for your time.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Where exactly do you?
I am the next-door neighbor.
So on that, to the left of what?
I didn't get to see this, because it was facing you guys, so.
West.
Facing the west.
West.
Yeah, you're on the west side.
Existing townhouse right here.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Madam Secretary, reviewing professionals, listener.
I'm an attorney.
Jeffrey Downs, I've been in front of you before. It's a pleasure again. My law office is Jay Downs Law, Malika Hill, New Jersey, South Main Street. Is it the intent of the board to limit the cross-examination to three minutes, as I represent several homeowners, or it's going to be quick, but?
I think I totally can respect counsel.
Thank you. All right. Before I bring up a planner to rebut the testimony, I just wanted to clarify a couple things with Mr. Joseph Kajkowski.
Yes.
Yeah. So you don't have to stand, but if you want to stand for the board, you're not standing for me. But you are a managing consultant, correct?
Correct.
How many times have you consulted on the manufacture of fiberglass pools?
I currently work with similar operation, not pools, to your question, but yacht and boat manufacturing. I work with three different main facilities.
When you say you work with them, what does that mean?
Doing their permitting, air compliance, air emissions. Jeff, you need to stand up. It's on the record.
He's got a report.
He's got a report. So I got to get closer to it. Yeah.
Sure. So you personally work for people that engage in fiberglass manufacturing, correct?
Correct, for their air permitting purposes and air compliance.
Have you ever provided testimony negative to a board about fiberglass production?
I have not.
Okay. And you indicated that you went onsite. How many times did you go onsite at this facility?
For this specific facility, once.
Once. And when did you go onsite?
Yesterday.
Day before. Today is four.
That's correct.
How long were you onsite?
Probably about an hour.
Okay. You indicated that you look for key things that would be a trigger to make sure things operate smoothly, correct?
Correct.
What were you looking for yesterday for that hour?
Add to the question that was asked before, looking for particulate dusting that could be going on anywhere around the stack area, and just a general observation of odors, and also just the assurance that what's stipulated in the permit was actually being done, namely, the exhaust stack is being run, because you put a stack there for a reason, to ensure the health of the surrounding area. That's why that was part of the stipulation in the permit, so ensuring that the exhaust fan and operations were, in fact, being utilized.
And what time did you show up?
It was like roughly around 2:00.
Did you ask, did you ask what manufacturing occurred prior to your arrival?
I did not.
Okay. Did you ask what manufacturing was occurring while you were there?
I observed them actively working on a pool.
Okay, tell us what you observed.
The gentlemen were just starting to pull the hose away inside the building. The pool layout was sitting there, and it was in the process now of drying.
And the process of drying after what occurred?
The manufacturer, the process, as John had described it. I wasn't there to witness the actual laying on of the resin.
Can you tell us what the process is?
Yes. You lay down the initial one, is the wax, the lax makes sure it doesn't stick to the mold. You lay down a gel coat, then you lay out the fiberglass that is then rolled with the resin and also sprayed along with the resin. Once that's all in place, it's set to dry for a couple hours to cure before they can do anything further with it.
And how many pools did you witness in there?
Just the one.
Okay. And you indicated that there had to be records kept for disposal, et cetera?
Records kept per the permit of the amount of usage on.
Right. Did you check the records to make sure they were?
I did not. I wasn't there as a formal compliance inspection. I was there as an oversight to the site, so I have not looked at the records.
So what specifically were you hired?
To speak on the process of the understanding of the airport, the air permit, to understand the purpose of the permit and the purpose of the stack with respect to the health of the surrounding community.
Okay. Were you paid?
I am on retainer through.
Did you visit any local surrounding neighbors' properties?
I did not.
Did you take any soil testing?
I did not. It's outside of my purview.
Okay. Did you consult with any soil chemist?
I did not.
Did you consult with any fiberglass air quality control specialist?
No, I did not.
Did you interview any of the neighbors to ask any of the questions as to what they saw as to the manufacturing process that they see daily, all day, six days a week?
I did not. That wasn't the purpose of my visit.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we'd like to call Planner Patricia Di Matteo Knoblock. Let's say it.
If I could, I'd like to know, who do you represent?
I represent several homeowners here tonight.
All right. Can you please specify their names, because if they're representative by council, then as you're aware, they're speaking through you, not independently, so.
Yeah. So one of them is the same girl.
Okay, and who else?
That's all unique.
No, we're entitled to know everyone that you represent.
Well, I don't know everyone I represent. I go through somebody who retainer. But if they want to indicate that I represent, then they can speak.
Pete Scalato, he represents me.
Do you represent anyone else other than Sam Gurrell or Pete Scalato? Or should I ask Mr. Gurrell?
Wayne Gurrell.
Anybody else? Should I ask you, is there anyone else?
No one else.
Okay.
Mr. Gurrell, would you like to swear in the witness?
Chair. Please. Sure. Tell a truth about possibly a guest.
I do.
Name and address, please.
Patricia Di Matteo Knoblock, 231 Forkbridge Road, Pittsburgh, New Jersey.
Please provide your full name for the record.
Patricia Di Matteo Knoblock.
And what is your educational background and experience as a planner?
I have a BA in American Studies from Douglas College, a master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers University, New Brunswick. I have worked as a planner for probably the last, I hate to say it, at least 45 years. And I was the planner for the Franklin Township Zoning Board and Franklin Township Planning Board for seven years. I'm currently the vice chair of the Pittsburgh Township Planning and Zoning Board. I'm essentially retired, but I have maintained my license and am fully qualified as a licensed New Jersey planner.
Okay. Are you familiar with the surrounding area of 870 Harding Highway, Franklin, New Jersey?
Yes.
Okay. Well, the board accepts Ms. Di Matteo Knoblock as an expert in community development planning consultant.
Yes.
Thank you. You heard the testimony earlier today as to the positive and negative criteria.
Yes.
You agree as a planner that that is the criteria needed for a D. variance?
Yes. Positive criteria, negative criteria, special reasons. I don't have a tremendous amount of testimony to give you, but I would like to go over the criteria for the positive criteria first. The applicant needs to show that by not granting this variance, that there would be undue hardship would result. This property can be utilized for any of the permitted uses in the Pinelands Highway Commercial District. It meets all the bulk standards for size of lot, frontage, et cetera. Denial of this variance will not result in economic inutility for the owner of this property. The project should promote general zoning purposes. I don't think that the proposed use of this property promotes any of the purposes of zoning listed in NJ S. 4055 D. 2. The 2013 Franklin Township Master Plan Reexamination Report and Master Plan Amendment Addendum states in Section C., Item 5, goal 5 is to provide Franklin Township with a broad-based economic foundation, but the first objective stated is to preserve and protect the township's agricultural heritage. Accordingly, the uses permitted in the P. H. C. district are intended to support the agricultural industry of the Pinelands portion of the township. And I just want to mention, the Pinelands portion of the township is different than the rest of Franklin Township. There are reasons for it to be determined a part of the Pinelands, and that is to preserve the quality of the aquifer and also to preserve the Pinelands itself. The uses permitted in the P. H. C. district are intended to support the agricultural industry of the Pinelands portion of the township. The site is surrounded by agricultural uses, and its rear property is actually abut the P. A. P., which is the Pinelands Agricultural Production District. This is the most protected district for Pinelands in our township. And that district permits agricultural uses, and it's designed to protect the agricultural lands and natural resources of the Pinelands. This proposed use is not only not permitted in the Pinelands Highway Commercial District, it is not even listed in the Pinelands Light Manufacturing Industrial District. The applicant has characterized the manufacture of fiberglass swimming pools as qualifying as limited manufacturing and assembly incidental to an onsite retail business, when in fact, the manufacturing activity that we see here is the dominant activity at this site, and it cannot be even characterized as light manufacturing. The other positive criteria is the promotion of the general welfare. The proposed use of this site is not peculiar to this location. The use is not inherently beneficial, and it is not less intensive than other surrounding uses, as stated by the applicant. As previously stated, surrounding uses include active farms and single-family residences. There's a small restaurant, there's a garden center. None of these uses are anywhere near similar to what the applicant is actually doing at this point. In terms of the negative criteria, the applicant has to show that there is not substantial detriment to the public good. In this case, the impact is the use on the neighboring properties. As stated, the surrounding properties consist of active farms and single-family residences. Due to the nature of this use, some of the farmers have ceased planting vegetables due to the concern regarding emissions from the stack and the use of unknown chemical substances in the manufacturing process that are stored on the site. The nature of the surrounding area is complete odds with the proposed manufacturing use. We also need to look at the impairment of the master plan and zoning ordinance. As previously stated, the 2013 Master Plan Reexamination Report endorsed the overarching goal of the plan to protect the agricultural character of the township and to develop policies to encourage and promote the agricultural community. There were no major revisions recommended for the Pinelands zoning districts, which have been developed in compliance with the Pinelands Commission. This area has experienced minimal change in its development patterns for decades, negating the need for changes to the district zoning standards as adopted. And that is essentially why, even if there is a reexamination report done, more than likely, there will be no changes or minimal changes made to any of the Pineland zoning districts. And I do want to mention also, there was some discussion about the buffer requirements. The buffer requirements that were noted by the applicant's planner actually do not relate to this particular district. The article that she referenced, Article 12, refers to buffers that apply to neighborhood commercial, highway commercial, light manufacturing, interchange commercial, the Malaga Village, and Franklinville Village. That's where the 25-foot boundary occurs. It has nothing to do with the boundary requirement, which is actually stipulated in the Pinelands Highway Commercial District Ordinance section, and it is a 75 to 100 feet. That lot is 413 feet wide, and if they have to comply with the ordinance, you're looking at 100 feet, 75 to 100 feet on either side on a 413-foot-wide lot. It runs deep, and in the rear of the property, it abuts the Pinelands Agricultural Production, where you need a 100-foot buffer in the rear of that property from the P. A. P. zone. So there's a lot of buffering that's going to have to go on on this site.
If the board doesn't have any questions, three final questions. In your professional opinion, did the applicant satisfy the heightened burden and show as a condition preceding the special reasons why this property is particularly suited for this D. variance?
I do not believe that they did.
In your professional opinion, did the applicant illustrate that this D. variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
I do not believe, I believe there will be substantial detriment to the public good.
And finally, in your professional opinion, did the applicant satisfy the heightened standard that it will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zoning plan and zoning ordinance?
I think it will have a detrimental effect to the zone and to the master plan.
Thank you. Members of the board, I only have a couple of questions for two more witnesses each.
Actually, if I can, I have some cross-examination for the planner.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but in your qualifications, you're not an American Institute certified planner, is that correct?
Absolutely, I am.
You are?
AICP.
Okay, I didn't hear that in the beginning of your testimony as a professional.
I have a copy. Do you want me to give him a copy?
We have a copy.
I can give you a copy of my resume if you'd like.
But as an American Institute certified planner, continuing, you take continuing education.
Yes, I do.
Now, your testimony was that the applicant had to satisfy and show that there was an undue hardship in order to?
Special reasons.
So that's an undue hardship. We have to show that there's an undue hardship.
Special reasons, yes.
So your testimony?
For a D. 1. This is a D. 1.
For a D. 1 variance, we have to show that there's an undue hardship, okay?
Well, I'm just saying that as part of the D. 1 variance.
And that's how you satisfy the positive criteria? Is that your understanding?
Positive criteria, special reasons.
Okay. And special reasons is only if you establish an undue hardship or show an undue hardship?
I'm sorry?
Special reasons is only satisfied if we have testimony showing an undue hardship?
No. You have undue hardship, promotion of zoning purposes, promotion of the general welfare, there's your positive criteria, and then your negative criteria, substantial detriment to the public good.
You don't, again, you can satisfy, in order to satisfy the positive criteria, you can either show an undue hardship, or you can demonstrate that the purposes of zoning are promoted by this D. 1 variance. Isn't that correct?
I'm saying you have to do it all.
You have to do it all. Are you familiar with COX?
Yes.
And what is COX?
That's the Bible of the planners.
Okay.
Planner's Bible.
Okay.
I didn't bring it with me tonight.
All right. So if you could, doesn't COX say, "For special reasons, for the grant of a D. variance under two broad circumstances. One, when the refusal to allow the project would impose on the applicant an undue hardship, which you testified, and slash/or, okay, when a proposed project carries out a purpose of zoning as defined in NJ S. 4055 D. -2."
Okay.
So you do not need to have satisfied both. You can either show an undue hardship or?
Well, what I'm saying is, is that you have not met either one.
Okay. But we didn't testify as to an undue hardship.
All right, then we'll just say that we'll forget about undue hardship, and we'll say that you haven't satisfied, you haven't satisfied the promotion of zoning purposes, and you haven't satisfied the promotion of general welfare.
I understand that's your testimony, and obviously.
That's my testimony.
But again, I just want to be clear, we do not have to establish undue hardship.
I'm saying.
Under COX, and as the law requires, it's one or the other. We do not have to establish just an undue hardship in addition to the purpose of that.
I will grant you that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All I'm saying is, is that I provided my testimony, I gave my opinion, I agreed with your, our township's planner, that there are definitely some questions here related to whether this is a retail operation similar to a bakery or a silk screening operation. I'm saying that this is not, does not fit that criteria. Obviously, you're asking for a use variance for that, right?
But real quick, the ordinance says "including but not limited to," correct?
Yes. But I'm also, if you look, if you read the list of permitted uses, you'll see that this does not fit at all. And if you wanted to read the permitted uses under the Pinelands Light Manufacturing Industrial District, there is not one use here that even closely resembles a fiberglass pool operation.
You reviewed Franklin Township's ordinances.
Yes, I've actually written them, too.
And the ordinances of Franklin Township don't define limited manufacturing, don't define manufacturing, they don't define light manufacturing, and they don't define limited manufacturing. Is that correct?
I'd have to look at it. I haven't looked at it for a while.
What?
I'd have to look at it.
Did you see it? Did you see it, defined anywhere in your review of?
I did not review that particular section, but I did do is I reviewed the district ordinances and I reviewed the uses that were permitted.
Let me ask you, the other ordinances that allow limited manufacturing.
Do you want me to read all of what's reading? Do you want me to read it?
Just, let me, I'm.
I can read, I can read everything here that's permitted.
I'm not asking for the permission in this zone, what's permitted in this zone. We're talking about, in their definitions, and in any zone, do they define limited manufacturing, light manufacturing?
I will have to look at the ordinance.
So you don't know?
I don't know right here, I have to look at the ordinance.
Did you review it tonight?
I did.
Okay, did you see it defined anywhere?
No, I did not.
Now, did you look at where light manufacturing or limited manufacturing was allowed in other zones?
I am only focused on this zone and the Pineland section of the township.
Okay, well, I know we're talking about the PAC zone.
I really don't think that what is permitted in another portion of the township that is not in the Pinelands has any bearing at all.
The reason I get to that.
On this particular application and this project.
Again, if you didn't review those sections of the ordinance, I understand why you would say that.
No, I did, believe me, I read these.
We're talking about limited manufacturing and assembly.
In the Pinelands.
Incidental also means, but it says including but not limited. Just focusing on the section, it says including but not limited to, okay? Other districts that allow limited manufacturing, okay, or, you know, specifically indicate what limited manufacturing they allow, don't they?
Yes, the Pinelands Light Manufacturing Industrial District does list all of the permitted uses. And if you would like me to read them.
I'm not talking about this zone.
I'm talking about zone. We are talking about the zone. Your concern should be the zone.
It says including but not limited to.
We need to have a question and an answer in the question.
Your concern should be the zone. I'm concerned about the zoning district. I'm not concerned about a general, what the township is allowing in other areas. This is not the other areas. And if you're now in the Pinelands district, the Pinelands district is regulated differently than the rest of the township. You will note, even with the buffers that were mentioned, in that section of Article 12, it specifies, it specifies, all right? It lists, it lists all of the districts that are, that applies to. And believe me, let it up, take it out, and you will see that Pinelands, none of the Pinelands districts are listed in there. And it's very specific, it lists the districts that it applies to. Your plan was incorrect.
Let's talk about this, okay? Everywhere else that limited manufacturing is allowed, it specifies the limited manufacturing. It does not include the broad language, including but not limited to, correct?
I have to read it.
Did you look at Section 253-144G, Section 253-167H, Section 253-189A1I?
And what are they, what districts are they?
Where it specifies light machinery as part of limited manufacturing.
Not in the Pinelands district, not in the Pinelands district.
Let me finish.
Not in the Pinelands.
Another zone, it allows carburetors, defines the limited manufacturing.
Not in, not in the Pinelands.
You're right, the Pinelands, you're right, in this district.
It's different.
And you're right, in this district.
And in the Pinelands, and the Pinelands light, no, you can't ask me a question.
In this district.
In the Pinelands, in the Pinelands Light Manufacturing Industrial District. In the Pinelands Light Manufacturing Industrial District. It is not listed.
In this district, you're right.
It is not listed.
You're going to let me get a question out? I know you want to make your point.
No, I'm not going, I'm not going to let you get a question out.
Thank you. And that shows, okay, but in this district, you're right, this is different. In this district, it does not include any limited language. It includes the only district that in limited, in light manufacturing assembly or limited manufacturing assembly says, including but not limited to every other district that's allowed, has limiting language and says specifically what manufacturing assembly says, is that correct?
Once again.
Well, you don't know, that's right, you may review.
I did review, I did review. I have no idea what your point is.
Let's go into the buffer requirement.
Why don't you explain your point?
Yeah, let's go into the.
This is conditional uses, what are you looking at? Conditional uses.
We're talking about the buffer strip, right?
That's not, that's conditional uses.
The setbacks, we're not talking about the setbacks. So this is not the proper section for the setbacks under the PHC, Pinelands Highway Commercial.
This isn't a, it's not a conditional use.
We're not talking about that. I'm following you to the setback section that you just testified regarding.
I'm looking at it right here.
So you're looking at the same section, you're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay, so before you say this is irrelevant and we're not looking at conditional uses.
Hold on.
This is not helping the board members at all.
Badger.
You're badgering me.
I have more questions, I have a couple of questions for the planner. I will not yell at you, I will not talk over you, if you will please come up here.
And I'll actually answer your question, sir.
When you provided testimony as to it wouldn't substantially detriment, it wouldn't be a substantial detriment to the public good, what did you give for an analysis?
So in terms of the substantial detriment to the public good, I looked at the existing permitted uses, but I also relied on the testimony from both Mr. Kowalski and Mr. Morrissey, the engineer, as to how the site could accommodate the development and meet the development standards in terms of site design standards, and how the air quality was addressed through the air quality permits and mitigated in the enhanced stack height.
And when you questioned Mr. Kowalski, the air quality control, did you know he was only on-site for the limited time of an hour on one day?
Yes.
And did you, you agree as a planner, you're to look at the characterization of the neighborhood generally, correct?
Yes.
Did you contact any neighbor in this area?
No.
Did you do any analysis as to what impact it would have on the property values of the neighbors?
That's not in my scope, I'm not an appraiser.
But you, you have the ability to contact a broker, Realtor, and ask questions, correct?
I'm not an appraiser and that's not part of the analysis in terms of the use variance criteria.
Is this, is substantial detriment to a property also affect the property value or is it no in your opinion?
It depends, you'd have to have an appraiser come in and make that determination as a qualified expert. That is not part of our affirmative application and there's no appraiser here on your end making that argument either, so that's not of consideration.
I'm only asking what you did, not what I.
I'm not an appraiser, so no, I did not do that.
And you didn't ask an appraiser.
But you asked if it's normally done and I'm saying no.
Okay, did you ask for any soil results from the air quality first?
I did not.
Okay, so the testimony about substantial detriment is based solely on the testimony rehearsed tonight?
And the fact that an air quality permit has been issued by DEP for the subject property.
Okay, but nothing else?
Correct.
Okay. In the interest of making sure the board has all relevant information instead of making points, I have no further questions.
Anyone else like to be heard?
Bring his to.
Right hand, please. He's trying to tell people about pressure, are you going to get?
I do.
Name and address.
Joseph Portino, 660 South Blue Bell Road. I've heard testimony tonight about this air quality, no odor, I walked around my property, nothing. Five o'clock tonight, you're driving by there, the smell is so bad driving down Route 40, it makes your eyes tear. Now, I don't know where he's here, not smelling anything. I live around the corner on Blue Bell Road, I can smell it at my house. This just brings back nightmares of Meredith Farms. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand, please. To tell the truth about the testimony you're giving.
I do. Rich Furch, 875 Harding Highway. Just a couple of concerns about the matter at hand, most notably is the odor in the air. We smell it from 7:00, 8:00 AM, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, weekends, nights, it's a matter of time. So much that my wife, kids, they feel ill by the smell. We can't go outside and enjoy the pool some days, so it definitely has a detriment to us in using our land. Second is the noise pollution, all times of day and night, there is noise outside that we hear, bright spotlights shining into the yard quite often, again, all night long. So that's our concerns. Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard?
Yeah, Peter Scott Bellatos, 622 Farshrove Road.
Mike, I'm going to object, he's represented by council.
I swear.
Speak through council.
Council, his attorney today asked him, what are you saying, is the attorney should ask him a question?
No, you don't have to ask, I'm just going to tell you what's there, all right?
Mike.
All right, now, I've been farming there for about 20 years, what?
Just ask your question.
Oh, okay, all right, I got, you go ahead.
How long have you lived at your property?
Oh, I've owned that property for, I think about eight or nine years.
Okay, and how long have you farmed it?
For 20 years.
Are these photographs, one of three, illustrative of what's at the property presently?
Yes.
And while I'll submit this to the board, while they're looking at them, can you testify as to what you said?
All right, like I said, I've been farming that for 20 years. And as far as the five uses that were there before this gentleman, you didn't even know anybody was there, all you saw was a garage and maybe a one-ton truck outside. And farming in the back and a residential zone, farming's allowed there, you don't need a variance to farm. And a residential zone, I guess you're allowed to live there too. So really, the variance was the use of the building and it was a seal coter, and I didn't see anything going, you know, you didn't see anything but a pickup truck or a one-ton. And what, the opportunity came to buy the property, so I bought the property, knowing that it was a nice quiet ne, no, it was a nice neighborhood for me to farm, and in case I wanted to build a house someday, I thought I can build it back by the woods. But now there's no, there's no way I could build a house with that kind of smell. And as far as the gentleman's saying, he didn't smell anything, I didn't farm there last year for the main reason was my guys don't want to work there because it smells so bad. So in last year, I didn't farm at all. This season, I farmed it and all I got was complaints from my guys about how it smelled. So whatever stack is there, the one before it was a piece of plastic pipe that was falling over. I don't know what kind of air quality stack that was, but now we got a steel one and it's still sucking out the fiberglass fumes and you smell it. You know, as far as the testimony I heard tonight that, well, we roll the fiberglass, we roll the gel, we don't spray it, and then after we herd, we spray it, you know, and then, well, we don't cut anything to make any dust, but yeah, we do cut stuff to make dust, because I've seen it. So a lot of stuff that's been said here tonight is, I see different from what I hear. And I smell stuff all the time and it's just, it devalues my property to now, what am I going to do with it, basically?
And one final question for the board.
Yes.
Is this a substantial detriment to your property?
A substantial detriment.
Thank you.
Like I said, I lost one year of income, hoping that when we didn't, the variance was denied last year, that the business will be closed down and I can go back in there and farm with no problem. But that didn't happen. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard?
I do. Thank God, I don't live within a mile of this facility because the odors would kill me. There is no mitigation of the odors. The MIR 13 filter does nothing but get rid of particle sizes that are the size of a normal exhaust and not even nanoparticles that are more harmful, go into your lungs and then right into your bloodstream and every organ of your body. These fumes are hazardous, no one, it will be a detriment to our community. Anyone who has to live anywhere that has to breathe that, it is cancer-causing, styrene causes cancer. This is an unacceptable risk. This should be in an industrial park. They're asking us to trust them dealing with hazardous waste and with hazardous fumes in an area where we count on our groundwater and our air and our health is primary. Now, zoning rules and the land use laws are to protect the health and provide adequate air and safety to the people in our township. This facility is the exact opposite of that. And why would we trust someone who opens without a septic system for his employees? He shouldn't even be open legally. The Department of Community Affairs will have to step in and close it if the town does not. They have no right to be open, they don't have a court order demanding that we cannot stop them from operating. The construction official, shame on him, should be closing them down, it should have already closed them down. So this facility doesn't belong here and anyone that would operate such a facility cannot be trusted with hazardous materials. And this is a horror story. If I lived next to it, I'd be screaming 24 hours a day at these people. I'd be picketing outside, I'd be doing everything I could to stop this. This is a horror, thank you.
Is there anybody else like to be heard? Raise your right hand, please. To tell the truth about the testimony you're giving.
I do. Kevin Kelton, Nicholas Drive, Malaga. I just had a question. From what the attorney said that represents the applicant, they've been operating this operation for two years, is that correct? Okay, so if I'm to understand, they've been operating in this township for two years with the current operation without a permit or a zoning variance. So how, how is that possible that this applicant's been operating for two years without first coming before this board for approvals? So they had.
Very complicated, you might need to speak to the attorney.
Mike?
Mike.
I think we've talked about some of it already. They did come before the board, they were denied, and that was appealed. And as part of that appeal, the township was also brought into that litigation as well as the zoning board. As a result of that, the judge sent it back for it to be heard again in the new hearing we have here. In the meantime, the zoning board is not the body that can ask to shut them down, so we don't have any, we don't have enforcement.
So, in other words, what's the right word, you know, for operating without permits or approvals from our town? How would you qualify that? I mean, that seems pretty blatant to me.
That's not the right word, Mr. Kelton, that's the construction officer. They, they're the ones that give permits.
Right, but he has, he has no permit, right? He has no construction permit, right?
No, there's some dispute regarding exactly what he was given and what he wasn't given.
What is the dispute? Do we know as a board, what is the dispute? What permits is, does he have, or does he have, or does he have not, no permits to operate this current operation?
Mike, do you want to answer that question?
It's not what's before the board tonight, the purpose of tonight was the comeback, with an application asking for what they.
A D1 variance?
Correct.
But isn't that what we, as a board, you guys turned down back in, when was it, 2021?
Correct.
So what, so he's back?
Judge sent it back here.
The judge sent it back.
And that's why we're hearing it again.
I passed, I drove by that facility and it's an industrial, a heavy industrial operation. And I don't think we have anywhere in the town that has, the stench going by on Route 40, all I had to do was drive by and I had to close my windows. That was that bad. And, and I also, you know, the drums that are stored of chemicals, I don't want to turn this place into Pioneer Metals 2, which is, you know, a DEP cleanup site. And that's where we'll be headed if we approve this application. Thank you, gentlemen.
Raise your right hand, please. To tell the truth about the testimony you're giving.
Yes, I do. Wayne Gorrell, 1108 12th Avenue, Dorothy, New Jersey.
How long have you lived there?
23 years.
Is this a substantial detriment to your property?
Not there at the farm, it doesn't.
The farm, where's the farm?
The farm's at 952 Harding Highway, Newfield.
And what is the substantial detriment, if you tell the board?
Well, you mentioned about drums, chemical drums, they're on the property line. Well, you mentioned about, uh, drums, chemical drums. They're on the property line. I don't know what's in them, whether they're empty, full, whatever, but they're laid over.
The purpose of the record, um, showing a photograph with drums, um, with testimony that it's the site specific.
Mr. Iglesias mentioned about some dust. I got a video on here that shows the dust going up outside the facility, uh, going towards, uh, Mr. Fierrell's house. Uh, if you care to see that, I could provide that.
Is the dust coming from the stack or coming to the ground?
It's in front of their building. They were working out front, and the dust was flying. And with the buffer zones, I can't raise produce right next to the, this facility with, with the drums and what have you. I mean, just can't do it. We don't know what kind of chemicals it is. Uh, air pollution, that could be in my cab tractor, working the ground right there, and the smell's coming inside the cab. And I have filters in a cab. It's in our office, and we're away, a distance aways from the facility. Goes in our packing house. Okay?
Okay, is there anyone else like to be heard?
Might as well be the third one.
Yes. Sam Gurrell, Jr., nine fifty-two Harding Highway, Newfield.
Do you find this to be a substantial detriment to the farming property?
Yes.
And why is that?
Because of all the smell. There's DEP record, because we called the hotline. We're eight hundred feet from the place at our office. There's documentation that they smelled the smell, state police, Gloucester County Health, and the DEP was out. So there's documentation that the smell comes out there. The fans were running, the stack was running and everything else, and we get the smell there. And May twenty twenty, before they even did a building, they decided to make, behind, they needed forty feet, they were gonna put a building there. Well, that day I went over there, he was already building pools inside the front building. They were smaller pools. They weren't big ones. So he was starting to work before he put the stack up.
Mr. Gurrell, where are you in relation to this? Is there a hearing testimony? Are you adjacent to your house?
There's four hundred feet between me and their property. I farmed a field right next to it that Mark Fierrell owns.
Is that your house or just your farm?
House and farm. And we farmed both sides of the road, and you got preservation ground on the other, across the street.
So most of Fierrell's property is between, um, you and this facility?
Yes.
Do you grow produce for, for consumption or like so many to farm?
No, vegetables, nursery, vegetables, fresh market.
I was gone, um. I do, yes. Maggie McCool, I'm on Orla Grove Road. Um, and as a person with some agricultural land, I know that, um, we farmers, if we have manure near our property line, we have to remediate that. And I know that this township, when folks have put up, say, like, I don't know, a goat fence, and they have a goat in there, and someone decides that that's a nuisance, or they make too much noise, or there's too much manure, this township is okay with not only forcing that person to stop that operation, like, remove the animal, also, this township is okay with fining those people for past wrongs. So I just wanted to point out that while we were not talking about the pest, the pest seems very important to the neighbors who have spoken tonight and the farmers who are growing food. Doesn't matter if it's for animals or people. If they're growing food, that's incredibly dangerous. You wouldn't be able to grow organic food next to that. Just wouldn't get certified to do it. Not that that's your goal, but if it was, you know, that's ridiculous. It's horrifying. So that, that's my word.
Anyone else? Did not make a motion? Also made a motion, and they've been seconded, all favor. I oppose. Any closing remarks?
Just a few things, actually, just to address some comments from, uh, the public. And Mr. Trustor? Come here. No, John, sorry, John, John, come here, you know, John. The containers I showed you that were next to the roll-off container, were they empty or filled?
They're empty.
Okay, and your roll-off container, uh, contains your empty container for recycling?
Correct.
And how often is that taken away?
Uh, when it's full, but, uh, inspected by the DEP, and.
And again. Your inspections, as we indicated in your direct, with regard to how solid waste and hazardous waste is handled at the site is through the, um, Resource Conservation and Recovery Act. Is that correct?
It's correct.
And you were inspected last by the NJDEP, as you indicated in your direct, on May eighth, two thousand twenty-three, and no violations were identified, correct?
Correct. The dumpster's been there.
Okay, and you also have to comply with the Clean Air Act, correct?
Yes.
And you were last inspected on September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, as you indicated in your direct, and no violations were identified, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, also, there was some testimony that, you know, farming operations have ceased next to your site.
That's not true.
Okay, and you actually have pictures?
I have pictures on both sides of them farming within thirty feet of the property line. Open tractor. There are people, not covered. They're not, no masks, nothing, working there all day, sunup to sundown. It's not, it's not what they portrayed it to be.
And there was some testimony regarding specifically smells that were, uh, coming from the property today. And did you even spray today?
No.
Did you have, so you didn't run the spray gun today?
Did not spray.
So you didn't actually manufacture a pool today?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Again, as this board is aware, we're back here to see this, has a tortured history, this property, uh, to say the least. We are here tonight, uh, as a remand from the Superior Court, seeking just use variance approval. We understand the complications regarding the site plan, uh, but we're asking for use variance relief to allow the residential use, manufacturing and assembly, onsite retail, outside storage, and a deemed a separate use, uh, construction yard by your, uh, to this board to operate out of this property as we happen.
Okay, gentlemen, like any more comments?
Just trying to digest all of this, gentlemen. We've heard a lot about the positive and negative, positive and negative criteria. That is what you need to focus on. Um, there's been presentation of evidence, um, and they have to show for the positive criteria. Either hardship, which they have not indicated was a part of their proofs, but that they propose these permits promotes one of the, um, purposes of zoning. The negative criteria, uh, demonstrating that the use variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. So, whatever your decision, you have to reflect on that and indicate why you're voting and why you're moving for this, based upon those standards. And I still say you probably should be looking at this site as a blank slate and hearing about the use and whether, whether they let the board approve in their regards. If you have questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't. Gentlemen, any questions, Mike? You heard all the testimony? Make a motion.
If you do make a motion, you should indicate what the basis of it is or what the basis of your vote is.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion not approving this. And I'm gonna tell you what, I'm looking at pictures here, and that whole property is all one big fiberglass swimming pool. There's a lot going on on non-acres, and there ain't room for anybody else. I don't mean, I mean the neighbors. I'm gonna have to take the, uh, testimony given by the neighbors. I can't see why they'd lie just to hurt this man. I don't want to hurt this, this man and his business, but like I said, make a motion not.
All right, motion by, uh, Richard Iglesias. Is there a second?
A second.
Jim, second, Jim Catherine.
So the vote of yes is a vote to deny, is that, so the motion was to deny?
Why make a motion deny?
Okay, so a, a yes vote will be to deny.
Mr. Iglesias.
As I stated previously when I made my motion, I'm just stating the same thing.
Mr. Gattano?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Garofolo?
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Felizi?
Yes.
Chairman Greitner?
Yes, I, I agree. I think that there's, that is a substantial detriment to the public good there. If the farmers can't farm, they'll be drunk. So yes.
You only have seven members, okay. Mr. Felizi?
Yeah, he's not, he's not voting, but.
Okay. Just, I had a request from the third, the third application over tonight as to whether they should stay or whether they should leave. You probably reached out tonight. Well, first, we'll go with the second one. You think we'll get through the second one faster? All week to week. Allow the room to clear and then make an announcement on that one.
Not doing the third one? Can't wait till week one? Chamberlain? Chamberlain wants to go to your.
Um, no. Chamberlain is last, they're asking whether they can stay.
Mr. Chairman, um, my name is William Hyland. I represent the third applicant. Yes, um, ours is also a use variance. Hopefully not as spirited as the one we've all sat through. Uh, but it, it is going to take a little bit of time. I know that there is some opposition to our application, and I know that you have one more that you have to consider.
So we're gonna say that you're not.
I would like to ask that you will continue us to your next meeting, announce that we do not have to give notice again, and we didn't want to stand up while you were going on through your hearing and interrupt other counsel, but, um, I, I think that, I'm sure you would appreciate it. And if anyone cares to know, Phillies were up three-nothing. William Hyland.
Our next meeting is, is that the Wednesday, the eighth of November? Okay. We have to announce. So we not have.
Yes, because the seventh is election day, so it would be November eighth.
So anyone here interested in the application for, if you have a right to, Chorea, Chamberlain, JB, LLC will be heard on November eighth, because we're not gonna be able to.
But that's with the, the Florida solar, right? And the city?
Yes, the solar, yes.
So what day do I come November back?
The eighth of November.
And do they have to?
No, they will not be renewed.
Thank you very much.
November eighth, eighth, November eighth.
Okay, next one agenda is Selco Partnership. Hope you guys talk fast.
The air conditioning is not that, uh, freezing.
You know, our guys are good at explaining. Okay.
Is this everything that you've submitted?
All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Nicholas Cuchet. Uh, here on behalf of the applicant, Verizon Wireless, uh, Selco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless. We're here tonight, uh, for the proposal of a new, uh, monopole at the property located at forty-eight eighty-three Lake Road. Um, I will have four witnesses. We will be succinct, uh, for the board. By first witness, um, actually, would you like to swear the malin at once?
Sure. I do.
James Rogers, seventeen seventy-seven Century Parkway, uh, that's Rogers with a D, Blue Bell, PA, uh, one nine four two two.
Andrew Peterson, box one six five, Fairland Village, Newfield.
James Kyle, uh, it's two East Broad Street, Hopewell, New Jersey.
And, uh, Petros Chakalis, two thousand Atlantic Drive, Mount Laurel, New Jersey.
Uh, my first witness would be our site acquisition consultant, um, if I may proceed, uh, Mr. Jim Rogers. Uh, Mr. Rogers, uh, can you please state your name and business address for the record?
Yes, uh, Jim Rogers. Uh, I work for Network Building and Consulting, seventeen seventy-seven Century Parkway, Blue Bell, PA.
And, uh, what has been your role, uh, with regard to this application?
Uh, I am the site acquisition, uh, consultant that Verizon hired to find an appropriate location that would fit within their current network, uh, to, um, add capacity and coverage, uh, for the area.
And Mr. Rogers, um, just showing you what is marked as exhibit A two, can you identify that exhibit for the board, please?
Um, it's a lease agreement with the property owners, Daniel and Logan Hall.
And that allows us to move forward with our authorization, as I. And that allows us to move forward with our authorization, is that right?
That's correct.
And can you just review briefly with the board what you did in finding this particular property?
So my background is in planning. I originally started out as a professional planner for 10 years, and I've been doing this for almost 27 years. Basically, what I do is I, they give me an area on the map of where they want a cell tower. The location that they had, the coordinates that they had chosen on the map were at the end of Lake Road, right along West Boulevard.
Excuse me one sec, if I may, these are in your packets as Exhibit A3, just for your edification.
Okay, so anyway, I look at the zoning criteria, what, this is residentially zoned over here. This property that we picked is a limited manufacturing district, so I focused my area on that because that's a permitted use for cell towers under the zoning ordinance. The, as far as the principal use versus secondary use, or two principal uses on the property, our original, I had originally chosen the Ezeglio Farm here on the corner. It's just farmland. We had done a design visit, tried to lease the property. Mr. Ezeglio decided at the end that he didn't want to move forward with us. I tried the greenhouse property. They were not interested. And then the Hall property, he was interested. I liked the location because we could hide the cell tower in the wooded area of the property. We also could meet all the setback requirements, et cetera, and have a minimal invasive situation where it would be fairly well hidden.
So as you noted, the property is heavily wooded and the cell tower facility would be in the midst of all those woods.
Yeah, and there's also an existing access drive that is an old access road that goes through there that we'll be utilizing for the tower itself.
And for the board's edification, Exhibit A4 are photos of the subject property, both perimeter and center. Just a couple more questions, Mr. Rogers. If the facility were to be abandoned for 12 months consecutive, would Verizon remove its facility?
Yes.
And per the ordinance, would Verizon post a bond for its removal with the township?
Uh, yes.
And are any signs or advertising proposed for this site?
No.
And we are not within the pineland area, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you would allow co-location possibilities for either the municipality or other carriers, is that correct?
Yes, this will be built as a four-carrier pole.
And the monopole itself, in case someone needed to go higher, would be built to expand, is that correct?
That's correct. Uh, the overall height is, I believe, 158 feet. So I don't, the way the RF engineer can get into this, but the need to really extend the tower is not really necessary in today's needs for this carriers because everybody used to want really high towers to go out a lot further. Now our footprint is a lot smaller. It's shrunk because we need capacity because everybody's using the handheld device as a computer, basically. So the height requirements are not as high as they used to be. So I would never, frankly, I don't think it would be ever anticipated that this thing would ever need to be extended up, in my professional opinion.
And we are not proposing any screening on the access road or the facility itself, is that correct?
Uh, no, because there's already so much screening already.
Thank you. Those are all the questions I have for this witness. My next witness I'd be calling is Mr. Andrew Peterson, our radio frequency engineer. And while Mr. Peterson is putting up his exhibits, I just want to direct the board's attention to Exhibit A5, which is Mr. Peterson's CV. And the board could either review it, and I could go through his qualifications. Okay. So I'm offering up Mr. Peterson as an expert in the field of radio frequency engineering and site design.
So he's a professional engineer in that area in specific?
I am registered professional engineer in New Jersey. Pardon? Been registered since 2005? Thank you.
Mr. Peterson, what has been your role with regard to this application?
I reviewed what's been proposed by Verizon Wireless for its merits as far as addressing coverage and capacity deficiencies in portions of the township that surround the facility.
And Verizon is licensed to operate in this area of the state, is that correct?
They are, yes.
And you've looked at this previously, Exhibit A6, are those the appropriate FCC licenses issued to Verizon?
They are.
And did you prepare a radio frequency design analysis?
Yes, I did.
Can you just go over briefly your findings with the board?
Sure, and I'll direct your attention to the board on my right. First and foremost, it's a map of the area. I don't know if everyone can see it. I believe there are smaller versions in your packet.
What's your exhibit number for that?
That is, that is housed in Exhibit A7. Yep.
Yeah, so A7, page 2 of A7 has a smaller, smaller version. This is a map of the area surrounding portions of township and then the surrounding areas. Bisected here by 40. And beyond the typical map features, we have some Verizon Wireless specific features, including the existing Verizon Wireless sites. The specifics of those are in the design report, as well as the location of the proposed site. Areas that lack yellow. Areas that lack green coverage are lacking in in-building coverage, and areas that are lacking in yellow have areas that don't have reliable in-vehicle coverage. We have a large area central to the exhibit here that lacks strong in-building coverage. Where folks in their place of business, in their home, wouldn't have reliable service. So this facility is going to address that deficiency in in-building service. If activated, with the proposed antenna center line height, we would create this area of improved in-building service. So that's one of the aspects of the proposal. The second is to enhance capacity in the area. The surrounding facilities that currently serve the area, they have sets of antennas that are currently overburdened with demand. And there are some charts that are also included here that show that excess burdening of the site, this facility. If proposed, we'll all flow this area of green, this area of purple, basically creating a new high, a new lane on the highway for, for data usage and voice usage of the Verizon Wireless network. So improve service through coverage and through capacity.
And Mr. Peterson, is this the minimum height required for Verizon to reach these objectives?
It is.
And I want to direct your attention to Exhibit A8, which is an electromagnetic exposure analysis. Did you create that document?
I did.
And can you just briefly go through the findings with the board as they relate to health and safety?
Sure. The facility will be compliant with the FCC guidelines with respect to human exposure to electromagnetic emissions. It'll be compliant by a large, a large margin. Using worst-case upper limit assumptions, the exposure levels would be less than 3.7% of the FCC guideline. So we would be compliant by 30 times or so.
And would this site interfere with other communications in the township? Being emergency services, other carriers, home equipment, televisions?
No, there'll be no interference as a result of the proposed facility.
And that is in your interference analysis, Exhibit A9, is that correct?
Correct.
And you performed an FAA notice criteria screening, is that correct?
I did.
Can you just go over the very brief findings in that?
Sure, the FAA notice criteria tool screening reveals that the facility will not exceed any part of the standards that govern the FAA criteria, and lighting and marking of the facility will not be required.
And finally, Mr. Peterson, you prepared a five-mile site inventory as required by the township and submitted that to the township, is that correct?
I did.
Those are all the questions I have for Mr. Peterson at this time. My third witness is our professional engineer, Mr. Pete Chakalis. Mr. Chakalis, while he's standing here, his CV is attached as Exhibit A12, civil engineering. I'd offer him up as an expert for the same.
How do I spell your last name?
Mr. Chakalis, I want to direct your attention to Exhibit A13. Is that the site plan prepared by Colliers Engineering and Design, which is your company?
Yes.
And can you briefly go through the plan, very briefly, with the board as to what you're proposing?
So Verizon Wireless is proposing to install a 50x50 compound with a 153-foot-tall tubular steel monopole with a 5-foot lightning rod atop, making it 158 feet from the bottom all the way to the top. The 55, 50 compound will be located in the center of, I'll say in the center of the wooded area. And if you look at the setbacks from the northern property line, it's to the monopole 408 feet. From the southern property line, which is off of Lake Avenue, it's gonna be 200 feet to the monopole. And from the closest side, you're 200 feet to the monopole as well, which meets all the setbacks that are listed in the telecom ordinance, located within the ordinance. The compound will be accessed via, like Mr. Rogers said, an existing grass drive. But we're gonna improve that to a 12-foot-wide gravel access drive, which will be running up northwesterly from Lake Avenue and then making a western turn to the, to the compound. I will show you a partial site plan. On the property right now, there is an existing residence, there's a shed, it's a local area right now. So we're using the area to the west to utilize for the compound. We are proposing a paved apron at the beginning of the access drive off of Lake Avenue, as requested per your engineer's letter. And there will also be a 20-foot-wide easement that we're proposing for accessing utilities. Utilities will come down that access drive, which is just power and telephone, out to the main street. And from there, we have the closest demarcation point, which is dictated by the utility companies. And that sheet I was just referring to was Sheet Z3, which is entitled "The Partial Site Plan." Looking at Z-4, which is the compound planned in the elevation view. On the left-hand side here, we're showing the 55-50 compound with the monopole in the center. We have our equipment at the base. The equipment nowadays doesn't come in a giant shelter, doesn't, there isn't a ton of cabinets. We have a power cabinet, we have a couple battery cabinets for backup, backup power. And we also have a standby generator, which is utilized for our power outages, extended power outages. The power goes out in this area. We want to make sure that everybody has cellphone coverage, especially in those times when you're trying to figure out where everybody's at. The generator will have, will have a sound enclosure, so at 23 feet, which is 7 meters, the decibel level is 65, approximately 65 decibels. At the property line, if you calculate that out, and assuming there's no trees in the way, it's below 50 decibels, it's actually around 46 decibels, which is whisper. Additionally, we do propose a turnaround parking area right before the compound, so when technician comes, they, they visit the site approximately once every four to six weeks, make sure that everything's working fine. A lot of that's done remotely nowadays, but they still visit the sites. They have an area to park, and they have an area to turn around and leave, so they're not backing up that long access drive. It does not require, this facility does not require any potable water, sewer, it's unmanned, it's remotely monitored. There is a 6-foot chain link fence, no barbed wire that we're proposing on this, it's a regular fence that encompasses the, the compound. There is location shown on here for additional collocators, which is shown here on the compound plan, and also here on the elevation view, where we show three additional areas. We are not proposing these, these are for future colocation. The, on the right-hand side of plan, we're showing the elevation view. As I said, 150 foot to the center line of the antennas, 153 feet to the top of the pole itself, 158 to the top of the, the lightning rod. We have our antennas proposed at the top, our equipment proposed at the bottom. The structure will be designed per all applicable local and federal codes. And we will have a site-specific foundation that will be designed upon the geotechnical investigation being performed.
Thank you. And finally, Exhibit A14 are photo simulations that were prepared by your company, is that correct?
Correct.
And they basically show, as the board can see, simulated views from various areas of the immediate area of the proposed site, is that correct?
That is correct. So we have three views here. The way that we prepare these photo simulations, we take a 6-foot diameter balloon, fill it up with helium. We lift it in the area of where the proposed compound is going, proposed monopole. We take pictures of it. So if you look down at the bottom, bottom corner here, you can see the balloon. Then we take, we put a monopole there. That's, it's a photo simulation, we simulate it there, so you can see what it will look like at 158 feet to the top with the antennas at top. So photo location 1 is from Lake, Lake Road facing southwest. That is on the key plan here. And that's approximately 1,200 feet, 1,190 feet away. Photo location 2 is on Harding Highway, facing southwest, which is over here, going across the field. And that's approximately 1,930 feet away. And then photo location 3 is on Lake Road facing northeast, which is down here at the corner. And that is the closest one at 675 feet.
Maybe it'd be time to give your report by the end of yourself, right? What do you think?
Thank you.
I don't know, Charlie.
So I, 10, 20, 23 was my report. This is a used variance, conditional use, and site plan application. The used variance was for multiple principal uses on one site. We've addressed all of my concerns in my report. We wanted a paved driveway adjacent to the municipal road and in the municipal roadway. We also requested that be paved, be paved prior to the start of construction, to save our roadway. Barbed wire's been removed from the fence. They identified the employees and visitors to the site, so I have nothing further from an engineering perspective. Pretty straightforward for a cell tower.
I just want to, first of all, notice was properly provided, public notice. I know there were some waivers for completeness in Dave's letter, just to make sure the board is in agreement with waiving those items for completeness. Three or four of those.
Yes, sorry. So the one thing I want to add is on item number 24 on the letter, soil erosion center control plan, there's a waiver requested. We're actually doing a soil erosion center control plan, so we don't require that waiver. Unless you want to give it to us.
It was a checklist waiver, you didn't submit it, so you need waiver from the submit, but it will be required. It's a conditional.
Got it.
Is there anything in, in the engineer's letter that you would not comply with, or are you okay with everything?
We are, we are good with everything, as long as the waivers are granted, everything's, everything else is.
Just have one question. Did you not go straight in from the road to the drive, and you like doing double, like going up and over?
So we're going up and over because there's an existing path there. We don't want to cut a new path to go straight up. So we're utilizing what's existing now, which is improving that, and not removing any more trees than we need to.
Unless anyone has any questions for Mr. Chakalis, I just have my land planner that you've already, I think he's testified before this board in the past. So please state your name and business address for the record.
Sure. First name is James, last name Kyle, K-Y-L-E, and it's 2 East Broad Street in Hopewell, New Jersey, 08525. So this is a unique situation. We're here for use.
Uh, we're here for use variance, but the cell tower that we are proposing is actually conditionally permitted in the light manufacturing district. Um, as Mr. Schiedig has reviewed, I have as well. This does meet all the conditions of the ordinance, as, uh, Pete had mentioned. And we looked, it meets all the setback requirements, it's under the, the maximum height that's permitted, it otherwise meets all the requirements of the ordinance. The issue is that we have an existing single-family house that's on the same lot that we're proposing to locate this tower on. So we do need a variance for more and more principal use. So for telecom uses, they're not deemed inherently beneficial, but we do use some of the same tests that we use for inherently beneficial. So on the positive criteria here, um, the courts have determined in New Jersey that if an applicant is licensed by the FCC, that's sufficient to demonstrate that the public welfare is promoted, which is purpose A, the municipal land use law. When we talk about site suitability for a telecommunications tower, the courts have said that if a facility is cited in such a way that it'll reduce or eliminate any capacity or coverage issues, then it can be deemed suitable for that location. So Mr. Peterson's analysis, uh, went through that, showed the surrounding sites. We do have a, a capacity issue here, we have a coverage issue here that this site will remedy, uh, so the site is suitable. In addition, um, as Mr. Rogers testified too, we can locate this tower within the wooded area, so we're going to be about two-hundred feet from Lake Road. Uh, most of the trees that are there now will do a really good job of concealing the lower half of the tower, as well as the, uh, installation of the equipment and the ground. So I think for those reasons, um, the site is suitable. Now, negative criteria, uh, we're going to use the seek-a-balancing test here, although it's not an inherently beneficial use. Uh, the first part of that test is determine what the public welfare that's promoting. So here in this case, uh, obviously providing this additional coverage and capacity will benefit township residents. It also benefits emergency services, so we have Route Forty that runs within the coverage area, so New Jersey State Police utilize the Verizon system for their in, in-car mobile data. Uh, most of them have laptops with their cards on the Verizon system. Franklin Township's police, I believe, also use Frank, Verizon system. So as they're going around, you know, they pull somebody over, they need to run a license plate, that's when the data service becomes critical and the, and the coverage and capacity becomes critical as well. There's also the issue of the in-building coverage that we're trying to provide. So we have a number of, uh, dwellings in this area. Uh, when you look at information that, excuse me, the Centers for Disease Control publishes, wireless substitution, so people that have abandoned their landline and only use their wireless phone in the United States is now at seventy-two-point-six percent. So when we first started tracking these numbers, you know, I worked with this team for many years, um, it was down in the thirty to forty percent range, just, you know, two-thousand-and-thirteen, and it's all the way to over seventy percent. So seven in ten people have gotten rid of their landline altogether. That's when the in-building coverage becomes critical, because if you don't have a landline, if you need to contact nine-one-one, you need to make sure that you can initiate and maintain a call from inside the building. So it becomes critical for that. Uh, we think the public welfare benefit here is, is pretty compelling. Um, second, identify any detrimental effects. Typically with cell towers, we're talking about visual impacts. Um, as we've heard, there's, there's no real concern over EME, we're more than thirty times compliant with the standard. Uh, we've shown this, the photo simulations, I think what you can see is that, uh, there are a variety of utility poles and other features, uh, in the area. We have a transmission line that runs, it's about a thousand feet, uh, south of this area. So there is context for other tall structures. Most of the surrounding uses, we do have residential uses south of Lake Road, but a lot of the vegetation that is in the front of this property is going to do a pretty good job of hiding most of what will be installed here. And then as you saw from the aerial, mostly non-residential uses, nurseries, greenhouses, there's an auto repair, uh, use that's on Lake Road adjacent to the site. So overall, the visual impact, um, should not rise to the level of being substantial, and this is really the least intrusive means that we have to provide the coverage that's needed here. Third part of that test, any conditions the board can impose to reduce the detrimental effects, um, you know, certainly as I look at this, I don't see any substantial effects, but we're certainly open to any suggestions that the board may have in this regard. And finally, we balance the, the benefit of the coverage, the enhanced nine-one-one capabilities, um, emergency service provision that we have here against any potential negative effects. I think in this case, the positives of the coverage and the capacity do greatly outweigh any potential negative effects. So I think the board, um, would be able to grant the variance, we meet both the positive and negative criteria in this, in this case. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And with that, uh, I would rest and, uh, ask that our exhibits be moved into evidence. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, what was the question?
The house occupied by the property?
Yes, yes, he lives there. He and his wife.
I do, Kevin Kelton, two-eight-six Nicholas Drive, Malaga. I have a question in regards to, uh, the gentleman here mentioned transmission line fairly close by his proposed site. In our township, do we not co-mingle on top of, uh, uh, poles, uh, transmission poles? Maybe this could be addressed for our engineer. Yeah, because we, we do that, uh, because the transmission line is right at Lake Road and Route Forty, it goes across to West Boulevard. And, uh, I know we have some in town that go across fifty-five in the area of Oak Avenue, and those, those, uh, they're not called monopoles.
So, um, first, first of all, the, those, uh, those are, they're located in wetlands areas, those transmission lines. Um, but beyond that, Verizon and the fourG and fiveG architecture that's now being deployed at all cell sites, um, is not really compatible with, with, uh, utility structures anymore. We're now putting the radios up behind the antennas, um, whereas it just used to be kind of antennas that were up there that didn't have a whole lot of, uh, maintenance, didn't, we didn't need to change out radios, we didn't really have to access. So we used to use them, uh, more frequently, uh, but now with the fourG and fiveG architecture, where we need to be able to access the antenna locations, because that's where the radios are for maintenance, for swap-outs, for things of that nature. Um, scheduling a line outage on high-tension lines can take, can take years, um, and we, you know, so from that perspective, you know, the maintenance perspective, the operational ma, uh, perspective, we really don't co-locate home that many more.
Do you, do you presently have, uh, Verizon, uh, on those, uh, transmission poles? In with, in town, in the township?
I'm not sure, uh, I can, well, I can tell, I can talk about the surrounding sites. There are still Verizon sites that are leftovers from when we used to do it, um, and they're, and they're severely compromised as far as their design. Um, we have to put the radios at the bottom of the tower, basically, and then run, uh, long coaxial cable. It's not, that's correct.
Thank you.
Alright, anyone else like to be heard?
I can't help it, I'm sorry. It's late, and I know you all want to go home. Of course I do, Cindy Merks. Cindy Merks, three-thirty Oak Avenue, Malaga, New Jersey. Two questions, I just want to be sure. This property, you said there's a homeowner who lives in the house, correct? And that's what has my concern. So, our, if I'm correct, the house was the Jenna home on Lake Road. It's right next to Visconti Greenhouses, correct? And that particular home was at one time half a million dollars. It ended up going into sheriff sale, after it went into sheriff sale, it ended up where they got it for like two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Here's my question, Mr. Glacius, you'll appreciate this. So if we do this, does that mean, and I think it's on a thirteen-acre piece of property, correct, something like that? There, it's basically the house, a pool, and then it has thirteen acres, am I correct? And it's not subdivided? But it sounds like it's all one property, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they're just general homeowners who have a thirteen-acre property? And now, are they now getting this as their income? So they'll be getting income from this by letting, uh, them put in a, a monopole, which allows the rest of the township, if I got a thirteen-acre piece of property next to me, they can do that? Because we don't even let people put a mother-in-law suite or other things, and now would they be opening the door to, everybody can put a Verizon in their backyard? That's my concern as to... Well, yeah, a lot of them are businesses, do you know what I'm saying? Like, like, what does that do? Does the township get any, any royalty from this? Because it really is a business. In other words, they're getting a business. I understand, but we've already, but we've got, and I, and listen, I've been doing enough of these. I know, but listen, all the way around, I understand that. Is it, well, right, because in other words financially, okay?
Yes, of cour-, yes, they do. They lease, we lease from them, we have a twenty-five-year lease.
So they get a twenty-five-year lease?
The property was picked because it's an industrial property, not because it was residential.
So it was picked because it was industrial? But it used to be a farm, it was a farm with, it was a home, big, big mansion-type home at the beginning, the Jennas owned it. I understand why they want it, they, I mean, I understand, we all pay very good cellphone bills, okay? And, and granted, it's, it's a lot to their benefit, because we do have a lot of our police, they're hooked on all over, you can see it, because they do, they have those dead spots, we know that, we know that. But I guess my concern is, is what it does to the future of our township with other homeowners who may be looking for another source of income. And do we set a precedence for that, where everybody can just put one up wherever they want, and then it becomes a real problem? And that... Because, I mean, I'm in Malaga, and we haven't, right, in Malaga, we have, we have several. So, like I said, and I know that it's just, just my questioning, because it'll be here another week, and another one will want it, and another one will keep, you know, because we have some people with some nice acreage that need some extra income. This is new construction, they rarely do that. I know, but... But would you, but think about this, Rich, a lot of us, would we want that in our neighborhoods? And it could be that way because we have that. That's my only question with the board, is where this goes from here? And people making income and how it becomes, you know, in the overall, probably something we could do for the master plan, I guess, and take that as a, is it a business now? Because it was a residential home with a, with a person living in it, now they're making a nice income, and they really became, you know, because of that fortune. Thank you.
I just want to add one thing, uh, we already have expressed, uh, we, we, as part of the application that we submitted, we got, um, interest from Dish Wireless and T-Mobile to co-locate on the pole already. So they have dead spots as well in the, in the property. So the concern over a proliferation of towers is unwarranted in this situation.
Anyone else like to be heard? Thank you very much.
Just closed the public session.
Mr. Glacius? Mr. Gaitano? Mr. Leo? Mr. Graffolo? Mr. Ketchum? Mr. Hallow? Mr. Felici? Chairman Bravner?
Now you can stand up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.